Good morning. I would like to call to order the Planning Commission hearing of October 17th, 2024. Secretary Lu, please take a roll call.
Good morning. Commissioner Boydston?
Here.
Commissioner Sandlin? Commissioner McPhail?
Here.
Vice Chair Kessley?
Here.
Chair Garcia?
Here.
Thank you.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item is public comments. Secretary Lu, did we receive any comments for items not included on the agenda?
Chair Garcia, I did receive requests for a public comments for item number four. Let me, uh, let me call their names, and these are all in Zoom. Um, one is Pati Wadwa, and the second one is Teresa Bola Richards. Pati, if you are on Zoom, please, um, let the, let her Zoom, um, IT staff know that you are in, so, um, they can, you know, so he can, uh, put you as panelist. Only Teresa? Okay. Can you, uh, put Teresa? Okay, Teresa?
Can you hear me?
Yes. A little louder, if you could?
Sure. Did you want me to speak now?
Actually, we really can't hear you very well. Can you, um, try again?
Is that, is that any better?
Um, can you make it a little bit louder, please?
I tried, but I'm not saying it. I mean, I'm, I'm standing right next to the device. I'm on an iPad, but I, I don't know that I can make it any louder. I apologize for that. Is, is, is that any better?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yeah, yeah, we can hear. Well, try to be quiet.
So are, are you wanting me to say what I have to say now, or, or for Pati, or are you wanting us to wait for a different part of the meeting?
Um, you signed up for, um, item, uh, to speak on item number four. Uh, item number four is, um, is, uh, any, you know, any subjects that is not within the agenda that you would like to speak. So, um, that's the one that I have over here for you. Is that what you wanted, or do you want to speak when item six B is, um, is open for public?
Is, is item six B the Krishnamurti Foundation?
Okay, no problem. We'll just go and kind of like put you down. I mean, um, I will change the settings over here then, and we will call you when item number six is open for the public. Thank you, Teresa. Chair Garcia, that is the only, um, persons that I have over here for public, uh, for item number four. Oh, um, Pati Wadwa was, is also in the, in Zoom. Pati, uh, if you could, there you go.
Okay, thank you. Um, yes, I too, uh, would like to speak for six B for the Krishnamurti Foundation of America. Not, not at the open part.
Secretary Lu, I believe you said he wants to speak on item six B?
Okay, um, thank you very much, Pati. We will call you then for when the item number six B is, um, open for public speaking. Speakers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye. Chair Garcia, then that means we don't have any speakers for public, uh, for item number four, which is the, um, public comments for item number four.
Okay. Thank you. The next item is the approval of the minutes for September 19th, 2024. Do we have any discussion or motion to approve the minutes for September 19th, 2024?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Thank you. Motion to approve by Commissioner Boydston, seconded by Vice Chair Kessley. Secretary Lu, please take the roll call.
Yes. Um, Commissioner Boydston?
Yes.
Commissioner Sandlin?
Yes.
Commissioner McPhail?
Yes.
Vice Chair Kessley?
Yes.
Chair Garcia?
Yes. Motion passes with five votes. Thank you. The next item is item six A. Case number PL 23-0135. This is continued from the October 3rd hearing. Applicant County of Ventura. Project description: Public hearing to consider county-initiated amendments to the non-coastal and coastal zoning ordinances to implement housing element programs HE-M and HE-N. Project location: Coastal and non-coastal unincorporated areas of the County of Ventura. Uh, I wanted to briefly mention that we do have interpreters available for this, uh, particular item. Thank you to our interpreters for your, for your assistance this morning. Case manager, Rashida Kadakia, good morning. Please proceed with your presentation.
Good morning. Good morning, Chair Garcia, commissioners, and members of the public. My name is Rashida Kadakia. I'm the manager for the Housing and State Mandate Section in the County's Planning Division, and here to present the non-coastal and coastal zoning ordinance amendments for the density bonus and special needs housing provisions, um, which implement two housing element programs. This is case number PL 23-0135. Today's presentation will cover these topics related to both, uh, to the proposed ordinances, and these are outlined in and attached to your staff report and the packet that you provided. So the, you may remember, the board adopted the county's housing element for the 2021 through 2029 planning period in October of 2021. And, uh, the State Department of Housing and Community Development, that's HCD, certified this housing element in December of the same year. As required by state law, the housing element contains several programs that the county should undertake within this eight-year planning period. Uh, Programs M and N are two such programs. The proposed ordinances, uh, will, um, update the non-coastal and coastal zoning ordinances, which is the NCZO and the CZO, to comply with state law. And what Program M commits the county to do is to update the density bonus ordinance, so to ensure the consistency with state law. And Program N commits the county to update its regulations governing housing for several special needs populations, which includes emergency shelters, low-barrier navigation centers, residential care facilities, transitional and supportive housing, and reasonable accommodations for individuals with disabilities. These ordinances apply countywide in both the coastal and non-coastal unincorporated areas of the county. The following slides will provide an overview of these topics, applicable state law provisions, and how we address them in the proposed ordinances. So, just to summarize, that these articles on the slide were amended to implement both of these programs. Starting with Program M, this, uh, this applies to the density bonus law. The California Density Bonus Law requires that the county grant the developer, at the developer's request, a density bonus, concessions or incentives, waivers of development standards, or reduced parking requirements for affordable housing or other specified projects. Like other state housing laws, such as accessory dwelling units, the legislature frequently amends state density bonus law. In fact, it has done so every single year since 2014, including this year. Currently, the density bonus provisions are included in the NCZO in Article 16. This was last updated in 2013, and it is, it is completely outdated due to the frequent legislature updates. State density bonus law also applies in the coastal zone, but currently, the CZO does not include any implementing regulations. So staff determined that a new section would be added so that the CZO could reference the state law provisions. To make it consistent with state law and to reduce frequent updates, staff has proposed to repeal and replace Article 16 of the Non-Coastal Zoning Ordinance and incorporate state density bonus law by reference. This has become an increasingly common practice among several local jurisdictions as it ensures that the local regulations remain consistent with state law. For the CZO, since state density bonus law also applies in the coastal zone but does not supersede or in any way alter or lessen the effect or application of the California Coastal Act, staff recommends adding a similar section to the, to Article 5 in the Coastal Zoning Ordinance that also incorporates the state density bonus law by reference. In addition, the CZO section requires that any requested density bonus, incentives, concession, waiver, or reduction be consistent with the county's certified local coastal program or LCP policies for protection of coastal resources. Which is really the extent of how we've addressed Program M, and that would be consistent with state law provisions. For Program N, the county was required to review regulations for housing for several so, special needs housing populations, and to amend the ordinance as would be applicable to ensure that they would be consistent with state law. This includes the five topical areas on your, on the slide here. This is emergency shelters, low-barrier navigation centers, transitional and supportive housing, residential care facilities, and reasonable accommodations. I'll, I'll explain each of these topics in the upcoming slides, where I will first focus on the current regulations that we have, or we, or that we lack in our current ordinances, and how we've addressed them. And to summarize, the non-coastal zoning ordinance was amended to include all five topics. Of these, emergency shelters and reasonable accommodations were the two topics that were amended. The center three sections were new sections that were added for consistency with state law. Please note, there was very little discretion that the county could exert in any of these sections. These primarily directly reflect state law provisions. The coastal zoning ordinance amend, was included to include, uh, was amended to include items three through five, because those were the ones that were applicable. And all of the revisions were made consistent with the non-coastal zoning ordinance. So we made it consistent everywhere. So, starting off with emergency shelters. State law defines an emergency shelter as housing with minimal supportive services for homeless persons that is limited to the occupancy of six months or less by a homeless person. And additionally, no individual or household may be denied emergency shelter because of an inability to pay. Program N specifically states that the county will amend the non-coastal zoning ordinance to align with the requirements for permitting emergency shelters. The regulations are currently included in Article 7, Section 44. And these shelters are only allowed in the commercial plan development zone if they meet very specific provisions. Following Assembly Bill 2339, which was effective January 1st of 2023, local agencies may only impose objective standards on emergency shelters, and they can only address these eight topical areas listed on these, on this slide. So that is a limitation by state law. It's, several provisions in our current ordinance are inconsistent with AB 2339 requirements. And most of them, and, and these include location criteria such as prohibiting emergency shelters being within 300 feet of a school, or requiring shelters to be within a sphere of influence of a city with a population of 20,000, or requiring a parcel of half acre or more, or, or, uh, imposing landscaping and, and screening standards, or requiring a management plan. So, in order to address all of, to make it consistent with state law, these articles were updated completely. Um, the bulk of the revisions were made in Article 7, where development standards were updated to comply with AB 2339. I'll address that in the next slide. Application requirements were clarified, which explained the county's issuance of a zoning clearance, which would require a submittal of a complete application and compliance with the standards. So now, the new development standards for emergency shelters were amended to include the eight topics, where they still apply the location criteria, like the proximity, where they may not be located 300 feet from another shelter. The maximum capacity was retained wherever possible from existing standards, like 60 persons served nightly. That is an existing standard. We have a property manager requirement, an attendant, parking. We could retain, um, requirements for intake areas and outdoor lighting requirements, security personnel, the maximum length of stay. So to the extent possible, we used similar standards that were either included elsewhere in the non-coastal zoning ordinance, like lighting. We retained the existing regulations, like the maximum number of residents in the emergency shelter. We used objective standards from other county documents, like we consulted with the county's CEO, Community Development Division, where they have their emergency shelter operations plan to make sure it was consistent. And where we had standards that did not have an existing reference in the non-coastal zoning ordinance, staff referenced emergency shelter requirements in other California jurisdictions. The objective standards include requirements to ensure that the use would limit inconsistencies with neighboring commercial uses and public right-of-way. So we wanted to make sure that this would not be consistent, inconsistent with neighboring uses. We also added one additional standard, which was permissible by state law, which is number nine over here, to ensure that the property owner maintains accurate contact information of the onsite property manager of the shelter with the planning division. And as a final note, the same exact nine standards will be applicable for the low-barrier navigation centers, which I'll be covering next. So with adopting these standards, we'll be making the emergency shelter section consistent with state law. Um, our house, as a note, our housing, because of the siting criteria that we had in our current ordinance, our housing element background report had identified four eligible sites countywide for emergency shelters if there was a need for an emergency. With, with applying the new standards, we now open up all CPD parcels in the county, which open up parcels, as eligible parcels, which open up parcels in Ojai, Ojai Valley Area Plan, El Rio, Oak Park, Piru, in East San Pablo Existing Community, and Bell Canyon. So they do open up quite a few parcels for us. So moving on to the next topic, which is low-barrier navigation centers. The, uh, Program N provides that the county will amend the NCZO and the CZO if it's applicable to include low-barrier navigation center, emergency shelters by right in mixed-use zones and non-residential zones that permit multi-family uses. Under state law, the low-barrier navigation centers refer to a housing-first, low-barrier, service-end rich shelter, which focuses on moving people into permanent housing, and that provides temporary living facilities, and where managers, uh, case managers connect individuals who are experiencing homelessness to income, public benefits, health services, shelter, and housing. And this is a little different because they have, uh, they provide, uh, low barrier means best practices to reduce barriers to entry, which includes like they have presence to partners, pets, storage of possessions, privacy. They're a few, a little unique as compared to emergency shelters. Currently, we have no regulations in either the non-coastal or the coastal zoning ordinances. And according to Assembly Bill 101, the, these, these must be permitted by right in areas which are zoned for mixed use or non-residential zones permitting multifamily uses. We can also only apply the same eight topical input, uh, objective standards as emergency shelters. We did the analysis, and, uh, we determined that only the non-coastal zoning ordinance needed to be amended to include LBNCs, that's what we're calling them, it's a long topic. As, um, three zones applied, which were commercial plan development, CPD, CO, Commercial Office, and RMU, which is Residential Mixed Use. All three are in the non-coastal areas. No coastal zones met the criteria. So we amended various articles to integrate LBNCs, added a new section to Article seven, and LBNCs would also be allowed with a zoning clearance and they would meet the same objective standards that I highlighted before. All of this would be consistent with state law. The only addition that we have from the emergency shelter section is that they would require operational services, which is required for them to comply with state law, where they offer services to connect people to permanent housing and where the LBNC itself is linked to a coordinated entry system. This language is directly picked from state law. LBNCs would be allowed in the same CPD zones that I showed on the maps earlier and the RMU zones are all in the Satacuy area plan in the map here. So that brings us to our next topic of transitional and supportive housing. Transitional housing, state law is define defines transitional housing as buildings configured as rental housing but operated under program requirements to limit length of stay to a minimum of six months. So there is a time limit and requires the recirculation of these same units to other program recipients. On the other side, on the other hand, supportive housing has no limit on the length of stay, will be occupied by the target population and is linked to services that assist residents in retaining housing. And it improves their health status and maximizes their ability to live and work in the community itself. Target population is defined as is includes those people with disabilities and families who are homeless or homeless youth. So the additional distinction between transitional and supportive housing includes that transitional housing is not required to provide supportive services and it's not limited to the target population itself. State law states that transitional and supportive housing must be treated as a residential use of the property and it is subject to only those restrictions that apply to other residential dwellings of the same type and in the same zone. So for example, if there is a supportive housing development proposed in a new multifamily dwelling in an RPD zone, it would require the same type of permit, so for in this case, an RP permit and meet the same development standards as other multifamily dwellings in that RPD zone. This also applies for the transitional housing, but for this example, I'm considering a supportive housing. State law also includes another provision where supportive housing may qualify as a use by right if it meets with some specific requirements in Government Code Section six-five, six-five-zero, et cetera, and is located in a zone where it me where multifamily or mixed uses are permitted and it meets these very specific criteria. So at that point, in my previous example, if that supportive housing was met all of those criteria, it would be allowed with a zoning clearance instead of the PD permit. So that's the and and we there are requirements for both that we've outlined, that we are required to outline in our ordinance. Currently, the non-coastal and the coastal zoning or the non-coastal zoning ordinance does not align with state law and we don't have any use regulations. The CZO does not have anything. So we made consistent identical revisions in both ordinances. We've amended all of these articles that you can see here. This is in your packet. And we've indicated which allowable zones include transitional and supportive housing overall, which is the overall blanket. And then we've also included a separate section for where supportive housing may qualify for approval as a use by right, that is as a zoning clearance. So to show you in a map, this is where transitional and supportive housing, as you see, would be allowed in most residential areas. All of the residential zones that we have, including and CPD. In the coastal areas, you would have all coastal zones, including coastal ag and coastal open space. And then for for supportive housing as a use by right, some of the so they must meet all the standards in the state law and I've just listed some of them over here. These are some examples that you have seen come in front of you for some of the projects before, which have maximum fifty units, recorded affordability of fifty-five years, lower income household restrictions, et cetera. A new as part of the twenty-twenty-four legislation legislative session, there was this law was changed and they added in non-residential floor area to be used for administrative office space. This was something that we added into your packet between October third and October seventeenth. So just if I just wanted to highlight that, these keeps changing, the law keeps changing. And to show that as a little more finite way, supportive housing as a use by right would be allowed in a smaller subset. So this includes R two, R P D, R H D, R M U, RES and C O and CPD zones. So it's a smaller subset, not as countywide application. And these projects must also comply with all objective development standards and policies that apply to other multifamily development in the same zone. And for the coastal zoning ordinance, you're looking at the RB zones, zone parcels in the north coast, RBH, CR two and CRPD zones in the central and south coast. And we're almost to the end. Coming to residential care facilities. Program N, this this these facilities provide non-medical or incidental medical services to people in need of personal services, supervision, disabled, elderly, et cetera. Like this is like a very specific need, a very specific list of people as well. And what state law says is that residential care facilities serving six or fewer persons specifically must be considered as a residential use of property and like transitional and supportive housing, subject only to those restrictions that apply to other family dwellings of the same type in the same zone. The definitions, land use matrices, currently, we do not have them. We need them to update them in our NCZO and CZO. So we've done that. So consistent with state law, we've made both sections consistent in both identical. We've amended all of these articles that you see here. And the maps that you see are actually exactly the same as what you see for transitional and supportive housing, which is applicable to all areas that residential uses are allowed. Moving on, find to the final topic, which is reasonable accommodations. So program through program N, the county is committed to ensure that permitting requirements and necessary findings for reasonable accommodations are consistent with state law and fair housing requirements. The state and federal fair housing laws require that the county provide individuals with disabilities reasonable accommodations in land use and zoning rules, policies, practices and procedures that may be necessary to afford disabled persons an equal opportunity to use and enjoy a dwelling or a housing opportunity. The non-coastal and coastal zoning ordinances include a near identical process at this point. Minor targeted amendments were required to bring them up to consistency with state law. So these, the what you see on the slide is what we really did, those minor amendments to allow requests to be submitted orally, highlight that the county will engage in an interactive process with the applicants and align the findings with state law requirements. That's really what we did with the reasonable accommodation section. This slide just shows how we have amended. It's an example of how we've amended the use matrices. Wherever possible, we indicated how the permitting type would be would be allowed. Like if you see the line for low barrier navigation center, we show that it is allowed with a zoning clearance in the CO and CPD zone. So we added that specific permit type in. But if there was a specific use where it is dependent on the type of residential, how the residential use is permitted in that residential zone, we direct the reader to that section instead. So for example, the residential care of six or fewer or transitional and supportive housing sections. So to summarize, we've by completing these two ordinance amendments, we'll be implementing two housing element programs. And with this, we will likely upon adoption at the board, we will likely be eligible to apply for the state's pro-housing designation, which if we receive this designation, it would make us eligible to apply for and receive additional funding opportunities and incentives for affordable housing, which would be great. And moving on, just to Sequa compliance, ordinance findings. The proposed ordinance amending the non-coastal ordinance amendment is exempt pursuant to the common sense exemption set forth in section one-five-zero-six-one B three of the Sequa Guidelines. As it can be seen with certainty, there is no possibility this project may have a significant effect uh effect on the environment. And the proposed non-coastal zoning ordinance amendment is also exempt pursuant to Sequa Guideline, section one-five-one-six-eight, as they directly implement Programs M and N, which were adopted by the Board of Supervisors as part of the housing element. The proposed CZO amendments are exempt from Sequa pursuant to Public Resources Code, Section two-one-zero-eight-zero-point-nine and Sequa Guideline, Section one-five-two-six-five as amendments to the county's LCP. And the amendments to the LCP are subject to a review for compliance with the California Coastal Act and subsequent certification by the Coastal Commission. And the proposed CZO amendments are exempt, provided the Coastal Commission ultimately finds them consistent with the Coastal Act. Section C of the staff report includes the necessary findings made by staff that the proposed ordinance amending the NCZO and the CZO would not be detrimental to public health, safety or general welfare, represents good zoning practice and is consistent with the Ventura County General Plan. Additionally, the proposed CZO amendments meet additional consistency with the LCP and the Coastal Act. And this is included in your packet as Exhibit six. And those findings will be published for future review with the proposed CZO amendments to the Coastal Commission. A legal notice was published in both VC Star and VIDA and no public comments have been received for this project. And finally, staff recommends your commission take the recommended actions included in the following slides and within Section E of your staff report. And finally, oops, I just one thing I just wanted to note. A minor, the Board of Supervisors hearing for adoption is tentatively scheduled for December seventeenth. I wanted to note a minor correction for the viewers and the commission. If the Board of Supervisors hearing is in fact held on this date, it will not be held at the Board of Supervisors hearing room, as it is noted in the staff report. Instead, it is anticipated to be held at the Ventura County Office of Education in Camarillo. But legal notices published for the board hearing will provide accurate location hearings. This concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions. In addition to Planning Director Dave Ward, we have and County Council. We have staff from Best Pest and Krieger on Zoom who helped us prepare the ordinance and yeah, we can answer your questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for staff, Commissioner? Vice Chair Kessley?
First of all, just that was an excellent presentation. Thank you. Very, very comprehensive and informative. Can you hear me back there? Sorry, I'll get closer. So my question is really about Program M and the density bonus law. In reading this, I noticed that Article sixteen required that twenty percent of the units be set aside for lower income. But if I'm reading this correctly, did the state law reduce that number down to seventeen? Only because it just seems counterintuitive if we're trying to create more affordable housing and we're offering waivers and exemptions to developers by giving them done by using the density bonus law, we would want to make sure that there's going to be a higher percentage of low of affordable units if they're doing something development development wise.
So, sorry, I got really close. Commissioner Kessley, so we were already just directly referring to state law provisions. So whatever state law is requiring us to implement is what we are implementing today. We were not implementing Article sixteen to begin with because it was already outdated. So in in terms of actual numbers, I could actually let BBNK respond because they're probably more attuned to exact numbers of what is allowed today, if that's your question. Whether it's changed from twenty, but irrespective since twenty fourteen, we have been going directly to state law and not at Article sixteen.
And it's state law that's seventeen percent based on what I'm reading in this.
Yes, I can let Ryan see. Oh, Ryan is, I think, muted, though. Sorry. Ryan's trying to talk. I don't know.
Are you able to hear me okay?
Oh, he's really.
That's our second or third speaker.
I think it's a setting thing with Zoom.
Yeah, I think that might be on our side. Crack that.
Am I not able to be heard?
We can hear you better.
Okay, yeah, I just Commissioner, I was gonna say, yeah, the 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 numbers Sacramento has made it easier to qualify. So a consistent observation across state laws is, you know, lowering the floor to, you know, what you need to provide to qualify and making it easier to qualify for the incentives.
Can you, we can't really hear you very well. Did you, were you saying that that there's a minimum percentage, a threshold, a minimum threshold of affordability to qualify for density bonus law? We could barely hear make out what you were saying.
Oh, yeah. Is this any better?
I think it's our. What I heard him say is that Sacramento has made it a little easier for persons to qualify. So they have made it. So it sounds like it's been lowered. Is that correct, Ryan? Yeah, okay. That's what I heard.
Okay, so basically, it's a state law that's already been in. Okay, so basically, it's a state law that's already been in place that we're just trying to conform to, and we have no discretion over that. Thank you.
But generally, I, my understanding is that the, the more affordability you commit to, the more incentives, uh, you're eligible for. Can you, can you confirm that? Okay.
Yes.
Are there any other questions for staff? Any other? Okay, thank you. I will now open the public hearing. Secretary Luz, do we have any public comments or speakers for this item?
Do we have any comments? Chair, I'm sorry. No, we don't have, uh, I did not receive any speaker cards, uh, for comments for this item. Thank you.
Thank you. Would staff like to present any additional or closing remarks? Okay. Thank you. I will now close the public hearing. Any discussion or motion? Planning Commissioners?
Approve approval.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, motion to approve staff recommendations by Commissioner McPhail, seconded by Commissioner Boydson. Secretary Luz, please take a roll call.
Yes. Commissioner Boydson?
Yes.
Commissioner Sandlin?
Yes.
Commissioner McPhail?
Yes.
Vice Chair Kessley?
Yes.
Chair Garcia?
Yes. The motion passes with five yes votes. Thank you to our interpreter. Um, I think we'll be taking a brief break for, in part to allow our interpreter to, um, wrap, wrap up. Thank you. We'll take a five-minute break. Thank you.
Hi, we're back. We'll be moving on to our next item, item six B. Case number PL 17-0012 and PL 23-0040. Applicant Krishnamurti Foundation of America. Project description: The applicant requests approval of a major modification to conditional use permit number 3697 for a change of use from a retreat to a camp, the continued operation and maintenance of the camp for a 20-year term, the construction of new structures, and a discretionary tree permit for the removal of four protected trees. Project location: 1098 McAndrew Road in the community of Ojai, in the unincorporated area of Ventura County. I think we hear an echo. Hello? Okay, I think we addressed the echo. Thank you. At this time, I would like to ask each planning commissioner to stay on record whether or not he or she has received any oral or written expertise communication or has any other information to disclose regarding this agenda item that is not already contained in the record before us on this matter. Please disclose the substance of that information only if that information is not contained in the record before us on this matter. Secretary Lewis, please take a roll call.
Yes, Commissioner Boydston?
No disclosures.
Commissioner Sandlin?
No.
Commissioner McPhail?
No disclosures.
Vice Chair Kessley?
I have no disclosures.
Chair Garcia?
No disclosures.
Good morning, case planner Christina Boero. Please proceed with your presentation.
Can I have the presentation up on the screen, please? Thank you. So, good morning, Chair Garcia, commissioners. I am Christina Boero. I'm the case planner for the proposed major modification to the Krishnamurti Foundation of America conditional use permit. And I just want to make note that we received several public comments before, excuse me, after the staff report was posted, and they are included in your presentation packet. So, for those who are joining online and wish to speak, please press the raise hand button on Zoom now, and you will be connected at the appropriate time. If participating by telephone, please press star and then nine to be queued. This is for Agenda Item 6B. So, my presentation today will be an overview of the project location, the history and description, the environmental review, findings and consistency analysis, public comments and engagement, and recommended actions. So, on to the project location. The project site is located in the east end of Ojai on 11.12 acre property. Thatcher School is located less than half a mile north of the project site, and the site is developed with surrounding development of residential, agricultural, and open space land uses. The project site has a zoning designation of rural exclusive five acres minimum lot size with a temporary rental unit and a dark sky overlay zone, an Ojai Valley area plan land use designation of rural institutional, and a general plan designation of rural. So, to help orientate yourself with how the site is developed today, here are some photos. We have the, on my left, we have the southern entrance to the site adjacent to McAndrew Road. We also have the Pine Cottage in the middle picture and the Archives Building in the picture on my right. In these pictures, we have, on my left, the Aria Viehara Building. It is currently used for meeting space and offices for the Krishnamurti staff and also for staff and overnight guest lodging. The Lawrence Cottage is also, it's pictured on the right, and it's used for guest lodging. Some other site photos we have is the garage on my left, the Pine Cottage Annex, which housed the former Archives Building and is currently used for some staff and resident scholars lodging. And then we also have the Yoga Pavilion, which is the picture on my right. So, on to the history and project description. The site is developed with buildings that were built between 1890 and 2013, and in June of 1977, the Krishnamurti Foundation received their CUP for... There's an echo. Continue. In 1977, the Krishnamurti Foundation received their CUP for an adult educational center and religious retreat. In 1987, a permit adjustment was approved for a 10-year continuation of the permit. In 1997, a modification to the permit was approved by the Planning Division, and it was for a 10-year extension, construction of the 4,000 square foot Archives Administration Building, and the conversion of the existing Archives Building into storage. And in December of 2000, the Board of Supervisors designated the property as a site of merit for its property's affiliation with J. Krishnamurti, who is a noted 20th century philosopher. And in 2013, a permit adjustment was approved for construction of the Yoga Pavilion. And in February of 2017, the project that is before you today was submitted to the Planning Division. So, this is just some information about the project description. So, this includes a change of use from a retreat to a camp. The reason for this change of use is because the non-cousin zoning ordinance limits accessory structures to 2,000 square feet and limits overnight guests to 20. And KFA, which is where I'll be referring to the project going forward, is proposing structures and guests above these limitations. They're also proposing the continuities of the camp for a 20-year term, construction of 10,931 square feet of accessory structures, revenue structures, the full addition of five full-time employees, and if the modification is approved, they will be bringing that total to 12. And these five new employees arrive and depart the site during the week. And the removal of four protected oak trees, and recognizing the programs and dialogues, the daily and visitor overnight counts, and the resident scholars. So, development of these proposed structures will be primarily in the center of the property as shown on the site plan that is on the screen. Here, I want to show you what the existing and proposed structures are. The existing structures are in white, and the proposed structures are in gray and also are demarcated by the gold circles, and they demarcate what the structures are. So, we have, in the middle of the property... So, in the middle of the property, A and B, that would be the proposed canteen building and visitor arrival center and bookstore. It is going to be located just south of the garage. We have the shade, the solar panels, and the maintenance shed are D and E, and they will be located just below the Archives Building. We have the two cottages within two, sorry, 12 cottages in two existing, in two buildings, and that's demarcated as C. We have the restroom, the ADA compliant restroom, that's G, north, just north of the Pine Cottage. We have H and I, which is the water tank and, sorry, the shade structure and the fire suppression tanks just north of the vegetative garden. And L and M are the Yoga Pavilion and water cooler, and the Yoga Pavilion Storage Shed, and those are L and M in the lower corner, the lower southern corner of the screen. So, I just want to point out where the proposed structures will be located and a rendering of what they will look like. So, on the left, we have the cottages, and when they are built, some staff and the resident scholars will be residing in these cottages. And then on my right, we have the canteen building and a rendering of what that would look like. We have the proposed solar arrays and maintenance shed, and they are demarcated by the gold and green star on the picture on the left, which is the aerial, and the elevations would show a rendering of what they would look like. We have the shade structure, restroom, and storage. They're demarcated by the blue, gold, and green star and the rendering of what they would look like. And the proposed underground Wayne Roder capture tanks, three are proposed. They are demarcated by the green stars. They are located just north of the Aria Viehara in the northern portion of the property by the solar arrays, and then one is located, going to be located by the Outlook seating area. So, the applicant is proposing to recognize programs and dialogues. These are weekly events, and they will be, they require reservations and are limited in the number of guests that can come to the site. We have the resident scholars. They are limited to 18 scholars onsite annually. For 44 weeks annually, nine scholars will be onsite, and then for eight weeks, an additional nine scholars will be onsite. They arrive and depart by shuttle, and they stay onsite for a 30-day period to study the teachings of Krishnamurti. We have daytime visitors. They are proposed to come onsite between the hours of 10 to 2:30, both on the weekdays and the weekends. They are going to be limited to eight visitors during the weekday, and on the weekends, 45, and reservations are required to come to the site daily. So, on to the findings and consistency. The project was evaluated and found to be compliant with the CUP permit findings. These are included in Section H of your staff report. And as part of the general plan consistency that staff is required to prepare, staff found, did this analysis and found that the project is compatible with the surrounding environment for these reasons. First, the programs and dialogues will be more than 1,000 feet from the western and northern property lines. They will be in 12, they will be in six designated areas, these programs and dialogues, and will consist of 12 to 15 people. The PA systems and amplified sound are prohibited, and the applicant will be required to provide a contact person for residents within 1,000 feet, and reservations are required for all programs, for everything that's going on at the site. And KFA is also required to provide a log of all of these programs and events. And the project's description also limits day and overnight guests, including the hours that they can be on the site. So, on to environmental review. Staff prepared a mitigated negative declaration, and it was released to the public for a 30-day public review. Prior to the release of that document, the applicant reviewed and accepted the mitigation measures. 11 mitigation measures were proposed, and basically, they are the pre-construction surveys for wildlife that could be found onsite, a vegetative screen in the south and eastern portion of the property between the facility and those neighbors, monitoring and preservation of cultural resources, and preservation of historic resources. On to public comments and engagement. So, staff met with members of the public on a few occasions, one here at the Government Center, and we were also available by email and the phone prior to and after the release of the mitigated negative declaration. The Ojai Valley Municipal Advisory Council also held two public meetings on the project, and they provided some recommendations, which the applicant did address, and those are included in Exhibit Eight of your staff report. And the applicant also hosted an open house on the site in September of 2022. So, on to recommended actions. These recommended actions are included in your staff report in Section H, and staff recommends that you certify all of the exhibits, find that the project will not create a significant impact on the environment, adopt the mitigation, mitigated negative declaration, make the required findings to approve the CUP, and the discretionary tree permit, and grant the major modification. So, this concludes my presentation, and we do have staff from different county agencies. Those are Environmental Health, Public Works Groundwater, and Public Works Road and Transportation, and also the Ventura County Fire Department, who are available in person and on Zoom to answer questions. And we also have staff, the applicant available to answer any questions, and they're also going to be providing a presentation. Thanks.
Thank you. Any questions of the staff by commission members, commissioners? Commissioner Boydston?
Couple of questions. I saw in your presentation in the history that one of the approvals was keeping the existing Archive Building, but it was approved for a storage use only. What's it being used for now?
The Archives, it is storage.
Storage only?
Mm-hmm.
Nothing more?
No, the portion of the, I'll show you, the portion of the Pine Cottage Annex, it includes the storage. So, there's a little storage area inside the annex that is used, that did house the Archives Building, and then it got moved to the larger location, which is...
I understood that the whole building had to be used for storage.
Um, the applicant could probably answer that.
Okay.
Yeah.
You mentioned also that some people arrive onsite by shuttle. Shuttle from where?
There, it's in the staff report and in the conditions of approval. It will be from the airport shuttle drop-off in Ventura on Spina Kerr.
Okay. The four oak trees. Can you talk a little bit about their history? How old are they? How big are they? Why, why is there a need to take out four oak trees? There has been some public comment that they're over 100 years old, and the mitigation is for planting saplings, which...
Yeah, I'm just trying to get the site plan for you. If I can, okay. So, the removal of the four oak trees will be predominantly in the center of the property where C is, and they need, do need to be removed to accommodate the construction of the new cottages and the canteen building. I don't have a date of how old they are, but there is mitigation in the conditions of approval that basically, we require, staff requires an arborist report that was submitted, and they need to be, have protection measures and offsets for that.
So, was there an arborist report on the four oak trees as far as their health?
Yes, it's in the arborist report. It's in the MND attachment.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. I will now open the public hearing. Would the applicant like to make a presentation on this item?
Good morning. Good after, good morning. Thank you very much for this opportunity to make this presentation. My name is Lisa Woodburn. I'm with Jensen Design and Survey, and I am here today representing the applicant. Also with me is Yop Sluter. Yop is the Executive Director of the Krishnamurti Foundation of America, or KFA, we'll be referring to it as KFA. Ken Radke and Elena Frazier are also here. They're with Blackbird Architects. And then available for questions via Zoom are Robert Harvey, he's our civil engineer, and Tim Hazel Tyne, he's the historic consultant for the project. So, as Christina mentioned, we've been at this for quite a while. The initial application was submitted in 2017, and the, oh, you know what? I'm sorry, I didn't start the... Can you start the PowerPoint? There we go. We've been at this for quite a while. We actually, when we first submitted the application, we had a different site plan than what you see before you today. And... Here we go. Oh, it is the PowerPoint. How do I... Okay, so this is the initial, sorry, this is the initial proposed site plan, and as you can see, it's different than what you have before you today. We had originally shown the resident scholar building and the dining hall cafeteria kitchen up in the left, the northwest corner of the property. We thought it was best to cluster it with the Ara Fahara Building where guests stay, but we went to the Cultural Heritage Board, and Cultural Heritage Board didn't like that idea. They asked us to move them more to the center of the site, and that's why we have the, that's why we have the current proposed location of the sites, of the buildings now. The other thing that we had proposed initially was having an annual gathering at the site. It would have brought in about 200 people one weekend in May, and we had to include overflow parking for that. After hearing from the neighbors and concerns that they had about the additional traffic and noise that would be generated from this use, KFA decided to move the annual gathering to the Oak Grove School, and that's on the other side of the valley over in Miners Oaks area. So, that was eliminated. Also, by moving these buildings to the center of the site, you see that blue dashed line on the site. That's the proposed historic district that the Cultural Heritage Board asked us to maintain that area. Everything north of that dotted area is to remain untouched. And we did add the handicap bathroom there, but that's just because it's needed at the Pine Cottage. So, everything else has been moved outside of that historic district. Oops, wrong way. I did want to mention, we have had multiple public engagement opportunities on this project. We did meet with the Cultural Heritage Board early on multiple times, and the public was involved in that process. And because of that, like I said, we changed the site plan. We also relocated the annual gathering. And then we did have two Ojai Valley MAC meetings and a open house, and at the end of those meetings, the Ojai Valley MAC recommended approval of the project. Sorry, I want to go back. Okay, thank you. I do want to address some of the comments that we've heard from the neighbors. As Christine mentioned, the existing permit, the one that we're operating under now, only regulates overnight guests and number of staff. There's no, it's silent to daytime visitors, programs, events, all of that. There's, there's nothing in the current CUP that has any limitation on that. So, what you're seeing before you now, the project description and condition number 21, that codifies what has been going on at the site for years. They've, what we're proposing isn't in addition to what has been going on. It's codifying what they do now. So, all the numbers that you see, that's been, the events, the programs, the daytime visitors, all of that is what has been going on at the site for, you know, years. The only change would be the addition of the resident scholar program and the addition of the kitchen and the dining hall, and that actually would help with traffic on McAndrew Road, because right now, if you're there, if you're staff or you're staying overnight and you want to have something to eat, you have to go down into Ojai. So, you have to travel on McAndrew Road. So, by having the cafeteria there onsite, it's going to eliminate some of that traffic. Again, condition number 21, it limits us to total number of people onsite, total number of overnight guests. We're required to have a log, keep a log, and that log is to be submitted to Planning Department upon their request at any time. Again, like Christine said, the only reason we're changing from a retreat to a camp is because the county changed the definition of a retreat years ago, and it limits the number of square footage, the amount of square footage that you can have on a site. And we would, even without the residential scholar buildings and the dining hall, we would be over that limit right now. So, we had to change, we had to change from a retreat definition. And people were concerned about, well, once you make it a camp, you can allow a lot more people onto the property. But we're going to be limited to the CUP and the conditions of the CUP, and any changes that we want to make in the future, any change to the number of people onsite, additional buildings, any of that, requires a modification to the permit, would require us to come back, go through this public process again, public notification, public hearings. So, the idea that just because it's a camp, they can, you know, organically grow the number of people onsite, that just can't happen. And then also, I just want to mention, any potential environmental... And then also, I just want to mention, any potential environmental impacts, anything like that, they were all analyzed and addressed in the MND and the conditions of approval. So now I'd like to bring up or introduce Yaup Sluter. He's the Executive Director of Krishnamurti. And he'd like to make some comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to speak here. I have a presentation also. So my name is Yaup Sluter. Let me see which button I press. Yeah. So you might not be aware of Krishnamurti, but for California, it's actually quite a well-known figure. I mean, one of the famous quotes he has is, "The highest form of human intelligence is the human ability to observe." And that you see in many books quoted. He published about 85 books in his name. Yes. So in 74, but even before that, in other countries, Krishnamurti started talking about starting educational centers. In 74, he already started a new school in Ojai, the Oak Grove School, which is currently still functioning with only almost 240 students. And in 74, as you can see in this quote, he said, "Now we can turn to something much more important and vital, which is the creation of an educational center." Because time restrictions, I won't read the whole quote. But it has been very, at the forefront of his mind and his actions to create these centers where people could come, explore the teachings, and explore most of all also themselves and the question, who am I? And in case you're maybe, likely you're unfamiliar, Krishnamurti is not a religion, it's not a creed. It's really an exploration in who we are as a human being, how we are, why are we what we are? And his focus, and that's the mission of the Krishnamurti Foundation that I represent here, is to disseminate his work, disseminate his ideas, disseminate what he was pointing at, and also to create centers for this contemplation on this. Especially, we have a focus on younger people who we want to have stay on our campus for several months in a row and study these teachings and engage with each other and discuss, not to indoctrinate them, not to get them into some kind of cult, but to really, who am I? Why am I what I, in my relationship with others? As I said, Krishnamurti is very connected with the historical spiritual heritage of California. Many people refer to him in their works. He moved to Ojai in 1920. At that time, when they bought the property, it was already a school. Then from '20 to '40, he mostly lived there in California. And people from all over the world came to discuss with him on the fundamental questions of life. In '46, '47, the Happy Valley School was started there, Happy Valley School, which is now called the Besant Hill School. In the '74, the Oak Grove School was started there. It has been really a place where creative things happened and where new initiatives started all over the last 120 years. And besides that, Krishnamurti also spoke over the world, but in California, San Francisco, San Diego, name it, and thousands of people came to attend to these talks. So I just want to emphasize the cultural relevance, irrelevance of Krishnamurti in Ojai, but also California, but also worldwide. Yeah, next one. Yes, so as the speakers before me already expressed, we have tried to do our best to meet the concerns of the neighbors. The camp designation, which is the biggest concern that we've heard, is something we cannot change, but that's a county ordinance. And that's also, was not our first, first choice. Nevertheless, we have to live with it because that's a county requirement. We think it's a win-win for us and for the neighbors because we actually codify all the programs and anything that happens on that, on our campus. And that hasn't happened before. So we are being held accountable now for all the programs that are being happening. Also, as a site outcome, turns out actually there's not enough water pressure on the road. So we have made an arrangement with Senior County and talked with the fire department to make a setup that actually increases the water pressure during crisis situations with backup power. So actually, and the whole community will actually benefit from this in, in our work. Yes, I mean, Mr. Scott Bochard, you talked about the trees. The trees are not 100 years old. They're memorial trees. They each have a name actually of the memorial of somebody who died and for those people. It's immediately next, three of them are immediately next to the new building that was built in the 90s, the Archives Building. So they were not there before. They were built after the house completed, the Archives Building completed in 19, in 2000. So around that time. Yeah, I mean, I mean, the biggest, also one of the concerns that the neighbors had at the beginning, which we really tried to meet, is that the screening of orange trees from the road, which screened the main building, had been cut. And that was due to a mistake. We replanted all those trees with olive trees. And at the moment, there's a, the trees are, the buildings are completely hidden from sight. Next one. Yeah, so the existing, the old permit, of course, has no restrictions on our use except for six guests and five staff living on campus. The new CUP has hammered that all very tight. Everything is locked down to the, to the person. And the goal of the KFA, and for those of you, and maybe none of you have ever been there, and hopefully some of the people here are going to speak, who have been there and who have benefited from the center and who come there on a weekly base, it's an extremely quiet place. It's a very contemplative, contemplative place. And it needs to be that. That's what we want to create as foundation, a place where people can come and it's quiet. There's no distractions. So we also feel that that will really fit within the, in the neighborhood. That's it, and thank you. I would like to appreciate you hearing all this and, and hopefully you recommend our plan. Thank you. And I'm gonna...
I was gonna say, if we have time, our architects are here. They'd like to make a couple of comments also on the changes to the buildings. Is that all right?
We can allow that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the few additional minutes. Should be in that same PDF that you had up there. Go to the next, where should I direct my? There we go. Okay, great, thank you. So quickly, just as we know, site's located in the rural residential area. As we zoom in here, can see the existing site. And point this out just to show how the, sort of what's there now is really in keeping with the, the residential and rural feel of the neighborhood. And as Yaup just reiterated, maintaining that kind of connection to nature, quiet contemplative environment is really important to their mission and was a key priority when we started working with him on the design of the project. Can I get it to switch to the next? There we go. A few things to point about, out about the existing site plan. As it's been mentioned, through our work with Krishnamurti, this historic district, the sort of northern half of the site became a really important guiding priority. So new buildings are situated outside of that as much as possible. The site has many, many specimen trees and historic orchards that were, we also work to preserve as much as possible and in many cases are proposing to kind of revitalize those existing orchards. Proposed site. And maybe I'll just switch to the next one actually here. This historic orchard here really is a main focus of the site and the activities that take place. Many of these historic buildings sort of ring that. In addition to wanting to sort of activate the center of the site for a variety of reasons, including being further from the road and further from neighbors, it also allows the activities to kind of concentrate around this historic core, which is sort of an important philosophical component to the teachings and things that happen at Krishnamurti. The buildings are all small residential in scale and footprint. The main entry, one of the guiding priorities that Yaup worked with us on in the beginning was how do we improve wayfinding on the site? So currently, there are two, kind of two entries into the site. The southern entry would become the main entry. And through a kind of revitalized main entry road that meanders through orchards, you make your way up to this kind of arrival plateau. On one end, you have the Archives Building. And then on the other end, you have the proposed dining pavilion and an arrival courtyard. Along that road, you have sort of pockets of parking. So it's not a giant parking lot, but sort of parking that's nestled within the trees. And then from this arrival pavilion, you would then find your way on foot to any of the other buildings on site. Quickly look at these, the residential new cottages. So six units per cottage, four on the ground floor. Again, modest in scale, garden patios attached to each. Two units on a second story, so it's sort of one and two stories in total. Gabled roofs, light colored siding, gray roofs. All sort of in keeping with the existing architecture on the site. The dining pavilion and arrival kind of visitor center. Again, modest in scale, very residential in feel. Fireplace, small dining room, a dining patio that faces out to that historic orchard, an entry porch. One, one story in total, glazing to look out onto nature and really, you know, maintaining this connection to nature, which is so key to the activities that they have here. I'll also mention, of course, you know, this is all in a high fire hazard area. We're well aware of that. So any materials and building assemblies that would be used would, you know, fully comply with current code in that regard. They'd all have to be sprinkled. And as Yaup mentioned, we work closely with the fire department to make sure all of these have proper access. And then the remainder of the buildings that are on site here, again, very modest in scale, distributed as sort of support elements to existing activities or buildings on site. The solar array, you know, being sustainable and, and green is a goal for the foundation. So the solar panels kind of contribute to that by providing onsite storage. Sorry, onsite power. And then lastly, right, just kind of a reminder of the purpose here, you know, contemplative teaching and learning and connection to the beautiful nature. Thank you.
Thank you. Secretary Lewis, do we have public comments and, and our speakers for this item?
Yes, actually, we do have a lot. We have 12 speakers, speaker cards in person. And then we do have 19 in Zoom. I will go ahead and call them one by one. And each speakers will have three minutes to, you know, to speak.
Thank you.
One is, the first one is David Moody, followed by Keith Nightingale, and then Linda Thomas.
Chair Garcia, an audience, just a note, today is National Earthquake Shakeout Day. So that could very well be your phones going off. I encourage you to silence them, but we anticipate that will happen sometime in the next 10, 15 minutes. Thank you.
Shall I begin? Well, hello, my name is David Moody. I'm a resident of Ojai, as I've been since 1975. I moved there from West Los Angeles in order to join the Oak Grove School, which Krishnamurti founded in that year, 1975. During the next 12 years, I served as a teacher, then as educational director, and then as director of the school, which is the position I held at the time of Krishnamurti's death in 1986. After I left the Oak Grove School, I took my PhD in education from UCLA. And later, I wrote three books about the school and about Krishnamurti's life and philosophy. I lived for five years, from 1980 to 1985, on the property that is the subject of this application for a conditional use permit. And in the decades that followed, I have visited the property many, many times. As a result of this background, I would like to speak as someone who is familiar not only with the property itself, but also with the psychological foundations, the psychological roots of the place. Krishnamurti felt that the Ojai Valley has a special quality, even perhaps a sacred quality. And he felt this property in particular embodied that quality or atmosphere. He had a profound relationship with nature. In many of his books, he included exquisite, precise descriptions of natural settings that he had observed. He felt that a relationship with nature was an essential element of right relationship with human beings. As a result, an attitude of great sensitivity to the land, to the plant life and to the wildlife was crucially important to him. And he imparted that attitude to all the people who worked with him and who had the responsibility to take care of the properties where he lived and established schools. Now, I don't know whether the criteria for granting the conditional use permit takes into an account an attitude of profound respect and love for the land and the environment. But such an attitude is ingrained in the DNA of the Krishnamurti Foundation and is reflected in everything they do. You can be certain, there will be responsible stewards of the land. And so granting this permit is not only the right thing to do on practical and legal grounds, but also will serve to cultivate the highest and best use for this property and for the Ojai Valley and for the larger community that it serves. Thank you.
Good morning. I live directly across the street from Krishnamurti. I've been here since 19...
Your name, sir?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Keith Nightingale. I live on McGandrew Road directly across the street from Krishnamurti. I've been here since 1946. And I'm probably the only person in the room that actually knew the man. And I can tell you that he jealously guarded his privacy and aggressively fought against any kind of intrusion onto his property. The statement he made in 1974 about an education center, at that time, he was assuming that that would be in the Oaks at Cortona on the other side of the valley as opposed to his property proper. I represent the East End Neighborhood Association, which includes 100% of the neighbors around Krishnamurti. And we are all opposed to the recommendation to approve. This has been presented to you as kind of minor modifications, no big problem, et cetera, et cetera. In fact, it's going to be transformational. If you look at the, their request for four underground water tanks plus the buildings that you saw, our ground is 90% rock and 10% dirt. It's going to take a huge amount of excavation, equipment, and work to actually create what the intent is. And in that regard, you have in the documentation that Christina has given to you, considerable precise comments from the neighbors. That's why I won't get into all of that. I'll just take one issue, which is the approval of the Ojai Valley MAC for the program. We believe that it egregiously violated its charter when it gave you that program, that approval. And I'll give you some specific points. Inside the charter for the MAC, 4.1.1 goals, "To promote a safe road system throughout the Ojai Valley without encouraging population growth and development." Subset A, "The primary goals of the committee..." Subset A, "The primary goals of the committee are to preserve and protect the character of the Ojai Valley and ensure the quality of life for its residences." And goes on in Set B, "Its most important resource, particularly air quality, transportation, and water, the study area is at or nearing or exceeding the limits of its resources." For those points alone, we believe the Ojai Valley MAC was an error in making that recommendation. We would ask that you reconsider the CUP request for what it really is and correct a number of the specific errors.
Thank you, Mr. Nightingale. Your time is up.
The specific errors.
I'm sorry, you're at time.
Thank you.
Next is Linda Thomas.
I had a question as the last speaker before you start. You stated you live right across the street from this, and you have for quite a bit. It's been stated that the amount of people and traffic is not really increasing. It's already there, and this is just codifying that. Is that your perception?
My perception is that there has been definitely increased traffic on the road for the present program that they have, and that this will significantly increase that traffic.
And when did you notice significant increases in the traffic for the program? Was it in the last five years, 10 years?
I would say two years, probably two years ago.
Thank you.
All right, so we have Linda Thomas, followed by Craig Thomas, and then Robert Bonowitz.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Linda Thomas, and I've lived across the street from Krishnamurti's home for 35 years, and that's been a privilege. I'm here to walk you through some facts that prove that the very premise of this proposal is false. Before I dive into the details, let me state my main point clearly. We, as a community, have been repeatedly told by the Planning Division, KFA, and the MAC that KFA has no choice but to become a camp in order to renew their conditional use permit, and you've heard that this morning. This is categorically not true. KFA can indeed both renew their CUP as a retreat and do their proposed construction. The only thing becoming a camp would allow them to do is to increase their numbers of overnight guests, potentially up to 114 on an 11-acre parcel. Let me reiterate, KFA can proceed with buildings and improvements, increase overnight guests from 11 to 20, without the need to become a camp. The only benefit to camp status is major potential increase in the number of overnight guests. As a community that has coexisted with Krishnamurti's legacy for nearly a century, we strongly oppose this. We don't want the increase in overnight guests that a camp would bring, and we believe granting this permit modification will open the door to future increases. This kind of expansionism threatens the serene beauty of our valley, which we all cherish. I distributed supporting documents, the CUP, and an approval letter ahead of this meeting, and now I want to tie it all together for you. Let's go over the facts. First, we were told KFA had to switch from a retreat to a camp. This was stated by Jennifer Trunk to me in a recent phone call and others at the MAC meeting. The reason given was that there was a mistake made by the Planning Division, allowing a 4,000-square-foot archive building, when the maximum for retreats has been 2,000 square feet since 1983, per the noncoastal, whatever it's called. Two, this claim is invalid because the CUP renewed in 1997 already permitted the construction of the new archive building. The existing buildings that were already over 2,000 square feet were grandfathered in in a meeting that was held by the Planning Division on April 16, 1987, where they felt that since it had been operating as a retreat, they would leave it as a retreat, even though all the buildings on the property are over 2,000 square feet. Even if this was an error, the existing buildings were grandfathered, oh, sorry, the existing buildings over 2,000 feet were grandfathered in, and a precedent had already been set. Even if this was an...
Thank you, Linda. Your time is up. Craig?
How could it be? I've practiced this at home, and it was fine. I'm going to just say my last sentence, please. A precedent was set, and even if this was an error, the planning commission granted it, and it can be done again. The bottom line is simple, KFA does not need to become a camp. They want to become a camp. And that desire is inconsistent with everything we've been told by the Planning Division, KFA, and the MAC, and we have the documentation. We plan to appeal these facts.
Okay, thank you very much, and I appreciate all the members of the public who are here to speak. Please note that you will be at time at three minutes moving forward.
But we have waited seven years to be here.
Thank you.
I think that you could allow us a little bit...
Thank you for your time. Thank you for your time.
I'll say it before I start, we've waited a long time to get here. You've let other people speak for a lot longer than three minutes. Okay, if we go over by 10 or 20 seconds...
The applicant does have time for their presentation. You have three minutes, the clock is ticking.
Sure. My name's Craig Thomas. I'm a retired Fire Department Operations Division Chief for the County of Santa Barbara. Okay, that's who I am and what I am, according to the Krishnamurti game. Ventura County Fire requires by code a fire flow of 1,500 gallons per minute at 20 pounds' pressure at the nearest fire hydrant to the entrance of the Krishnamurti property. They don't have that. They don't have 1,500 gallons. Okay, they might have, on a good day, 350 gallons with 10 to 15 pounds' pressure. And you've got to remember that when you're figuring fire flow, fire flow isn't a perfect science. You flow at the hydrant. If any other water is running in your neighborhood, your flow is going to be off. Okay, so that's in perfect conditions. All right, let's see. Senior Canyon Water cannot comply with the Ventura County Fire Flow through the existing four-inch and some six-inch line. This flow might be possible with an assist from Casitas Water Company water tanks and pump next door to KFA. But right now, no outside service agreement exists between Casitas, Senior Canyon, or the KFA project. So that's not what they said earlier about the water is not true. The Fire Safe Council Study states that in a wildland fire incident like the Konigstein Fire or the Thomas Fires, getting 100% of the residents evacuated is impossible. Based on this study and the maps that you've seen, what are KFA's plans to ensure the safety of guests and residents, most of whom will be unfamiliar with the area? No shuttles will be coming because the roads will be closed. No fire responders. Will they shelter in place? And if they shelter in place, how large are these shelter-in-place zones and safety zones? And where are they located in this new plan? Okay, who will be the responsible party that ensures no one panics and all residents and guests are accounted for? This is hard enough to do during daylight hours, but at night with smoke and fire, it's impossible. Okay, during the Thomas Fire, people wonder, how come all of our stuff is still on McAndrew? Well, it isn't because of fire prevention. It isn't because of the fire trucks arrived and did any life-threatening things to put out the fire. It was dumb luck. Okay, the wind died for two hours. The fire creeped up the hill to get just past Thatcher School. The wind kicked back up again. The next stop was Highway 101. Okay, that same problem still exists there. We live in a high-fire hazard area. They're proposing all these expansions, and we can't even get fire insurance on our houses there. So I don't get it. Anyway, that's it.
Thank you. Next is Robert Bonowitz, followed by Jan Sommer, and then Howard Ward.
I'm Robert Bonowitz. I live across the street from the Krishnamurti establishment. You've been presented a picture that, oh, they all love peace and quiet, but if you read the report by the staff, they ran an illegal bed and breakfast for several years. The problems the neighbors had was there were people wandering on their property, throwing trash, particularly alcohol bottles, because they couldn't drink at the Krishnamurti Foundation, so they would come onto our property. They wandered into neighboring orchards, bringing contaminated fungus from the Krishnamurti orchards into their orchards of organic producers. So despite numbers of complaints, either a lax of management or an inability to control the people living there, things weren't done to prevent this intrusion on the neighborhood, including walking down my driveway, which is pretty long, by people just sort of out for a tour. The staff has tried to address this on Page Five of their staff report in 14, saying that people have to pledge that if they're staying overnight, be there for some function. I submit that's not nearly enough. Anybody who's staying there should have had to pre-sign that they enroll in a course there or actively participating, so it can be measured and monitored and counted. The other issue has been listed here by several people, is just this creep, 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 creep. And there's no doubt by the people in the neighborhood that the point to making this a camp is to continue to grow it. As I read the CUP, it sounded like, okay, there can be some hearings if they want to increase it. I may have it wrong, but I think they should have to apply for a totally new CUP. Basically, I'm in the camp. It could be a retreat with exceptions carved out so that they meet the needs, but this going to a camp and being forced by the county is ridiculous.
Thank you. Next, I'm sorry, I messed up the sequence. Next should be Matt Sommer, followed by Jan Sommer.
Matt Sommer, I lived on McAndrew Road for 23 years. I've got to say, I'm a writer, and this staff report is the best pure fiction I've ever read. Let me just give one example. I wish I could go through every point, but we vehemently oppose this. Like E4, "The proposed development would not be detrimental to the public interest, health, safety, convenience, or welfare." And then they contradict themselves. 96 average daily trips, do the math, that's 35,040 vehicles a year on our road. We have mothers, young mothers and fathers with their baby strollers. We have elderly people going on walks. We have people walking their dog, and you're adding 35,000 vehicles to our road. Think about that for a second. Also, I've been in fundraising my whole life, helping nonprofits and charities. This is a moneymaker. Not only is the building an opportunity to raise money from their existing donors, but every person who comes on there is a potential for and exists to become a donor. And they can say to their existing donors, look how many people we've helped. What I'd like to say to YAP and his people is expand your online program. We do this all the time. I work with universities. I work with schools. You could influence the whole world by going online. My sister-in-law does online yoga programs, philosophical programs on yoga. You could do that without taking... The reason they're not doing that is because they're taking advantage of the beautiful scenic area in which we live. And like has been noted, the people that they say that, who am I is the question they're asking, but who, the people they're bringing in are transient people who throw their liquor bottles, who come onto our properties. People are putting up fences around their property because of what's happening out there. So what I would say is, I've been on McAndrew for 23 years. I've never had a problem with any of my neighbors. I've never had to call the county. I've never had to call the police. I've never had to call my neighbors and say, hey, you're bothering us, except for this organization. It's the only problem we're having on the neighborhood, is what they're doing. There's people out there doing primal screaming, and we have to deal with that. Also, what I would say is, I'm asking each one of you, we don't have the legal, architectural, engineering group that they have. We can't afford it. We don't even do a fundraiser. We're asking you, as our advocates, to stand up for us, the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
No clapping. Sorry, no clapping. Thank you.
Next is Jan Sommer, followed by Howard Ward, and then Michael Weber.
I'm Jan Sommer, and if you build it, they will come. So we know that building programs create more donors and raise money. And they have already built buildings. If you go back to Krishnamurti, and he built his home and his garage for archives, and now you look at the property, and what does it contain? And then look at the expansion beyond that, and what buildings, how many more? And they violated their permit, and then they had the pepper tree in, like people have already mentioned. That was, they did it illegally, and then they fixed it because they got caught. And so for us, they have a history of not being honest and not being faithful to what they promise. And so why should they change that? Give a mouse a cookie. And I'm like, it's easier to get forgiven than to get permission. I don't understand. And we, just like my husband said, are just neighbors who have invested. We have purchased our homes. We pay taxes, and we take care of the land all around us. They are a group of people who are coming in, and it is a commercial enterprise. They're using sweet words like cottages and modest and nature, and it's like you're inviting literally thousands of people and people from all over the world to come to this area to enjoy it. And it's like, that's not what he wanted, and it's not what we want, and it's not how it's zoned. And so I don't really understand how it's come to this. And I'm just begging you to please look out for us, because we don't have a group of donors supporting us. We can't afford to pay all of the people that they have enlisted to help them, who will all benefit the architect, et cetera, who will benefit from what they're doing. We don't have that, and it's just sad. So the other thing I'd like to say is Thatcher and Kamra Ma are children that are supervised. Every move they make is supervised. We all know as adults that we get to do what we want, and we're not going to have a parent or an authority supervisor put us in our room or tell us we can't go out for the day and we're banished to our bedroom. We get to choose, and that's what's happening. These people are coming, and they are transient, and they're doing what they want, and they can say all these really kind, sweet things, but that's not our experience. And so we're just begging you to please look out for us and stop the expansion and put it to where it was, that they even took advantage of that.
Thank you, Jan. Your time is up.
Thank you so much for hearing us.
Howard Ward, followed by Michael Weber, and then Cloud Kent.
Good morning. My name's Howard Ward. Thanks for this opportunity. I work at the Krishnamurti Center, the Pine Cottage Visiting Center, and I greet people when they come in. I work Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays. Basically, the visitors that have come there are some of the most respectful people that I've ever met in my life. The very intention of Krishnamurti was to see if we could create a different kind of society where people are actually caring about each other and cooperating and listening to each other. We occasionally have had a couple of resident students, but I believe this expansion is to allow more students to come there, learn about themselves, and see why, can we learn to cooperate and live together in a different way? This idea that there's transience there, I don't see them. I would invite everybody to come up and see how tranquil the property is. Everybody that comes there is completely respectful. If there's any kind of alcohol or anything, it has nothing to do with our visitors. Krishnamurti encouraged vegetarianism, no alcohol, stimulants, things. He was strictly about learning to be a caring human being and seeing if we could create a different kind of culture. And when the students come there, if they had this cafeteria that they're talking about, then they wouldn't have to travel out. But it's not like an overnight staying place. It's a place where students can come, be quiet, look at the teachings, which are about learning about yourself. It's not a cult or a thing. It's literally, I came across Krishnamurti because I read Socrates in college, and he said, "Know thyself," and I was interested in it. And this is literally what the teachings are about. Can we observe ourselves in relationship and stop hurting each other and care about each other? And the idea that there's tons of visitors, yesterday at the... foundation, they, they had a program, there were of 10 people, that were just in quiet in a dialogue room. And I had zero visitors yesterday. Zero, that's how many came yesterday. You know, so it's not, and I don't see all this traffic. I drive over there three, four times a week. I facilitate some of the dialogues on the Wednesday night, which have been extremely beneficial to my life. You know, like, I came up there in 1986 looking to learn about myself, and they had this opportunity to come and go to a dialogue once a week and learn together with other caring human beings. Come up and see, it's a very tranquil place and people are not coming and going all the time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Michael. Next is, oh, thank you, Howard. Next is Michael Weaver, followed by Claude Kent, and then Nancy Kent.
Good morning, Krishnamurti. My name's Michael Weaver. I live at 1240 McAndrew Road for the last 26 years. The real concern, I think, of the neighborhood is the, the change from a retreat to a camp. That is, the, kind of opens up the possibility for future expansion. And I would, really, if you refer to the, the coastal audience, non-coastal audience ordinance 8107-17, you'll see that part of the problem is the combination of the camp designation and the zoning. If the property was zoned rural agricultural, as it was at one time, rather than rural exclusive, the, the amount of possible overnight and daily visitors is one-fourth of the, of the total that's allowed for rural exclusive. The, the definition of a retreat states that it provides opportunities for small groups to congregate temporarily on site for the, such purposes of education, enlightenment, contemplation, renewal, and solitude, and by its nature needs to be located in a quiet, sparsely populated natural environment. That is exactly where we are currently. And it's what Krishnamurti has been for all the time I have been there. The project description, table four, lists a whole list of, of possible attendees per each day, and a 10 to 40 attendees several days a week, 52 weeks out of the year. Each Saturday, 20 attendees attending evening, evening talks, and six times a year, 40 people attending special evening talks up to 10 o'clock at night. In addition, then, of course, there's a three-day annual conference, Monday, Friday through Sunday, of 64 each. If you add all that up, it's about 7,000 visitors during the year. I think those numbers are wishful thinking because we have not seen that type of activity. I agree with the former speaker, there are many times, there's no one there. And so where these numbers came from, I can't say. But we have been asking the KFI to, KFA to report the number of visitors every day for the, and that's been going on for the last two years. We have not seen that data. I've asked the planning commission to, to look at it because I don't think they support these, these expectations that.
Thank you, Michael. Your time is up. Next is Claude Kent, followed by Nancy Kent, and then Rex Shroud.
Hello, my name is Claude Kent. I live at 1266 McAndrew Road, up behind the Krishnamurti Library. I have been there for 38 years. Our house was built in 1928 as part of the KFA campus. We are their closest neighbors and share two long property lines. Our house is around 12 feet from their property. We have peacefully coexisted for most of the years. When we have a problem, it is hard, has been difficult to get in touch with anyone over there, but we usually manage on our own to take care of it. There have been issues with the water system. Stray guests have invaded our yard, looking around, and some even tossing their used wine bottles over our fence because there's no alcohol allowed at KFA. Since the beginning of this project, things have changed over there. They are doing a lot of reconfiguring of the landscape. There has been heavy machinery noise, and I have noticed a lot of the large trees and vegetations have disappeared. We have a lookout on top on our roof that is about three stories high. Looking out over their property used to be beautiful. Now it looks like a parking lot. They have planted some very small olives, but it will be many years before that makes any difference. One of the biggest changes I have noticed about the property is that there is almost no one over there. I wonder who they are building this for? Their property seems empty. There are fewer and fewer people every year. Is this expansion prudent? Look at our, look at other facilities in the East End, like San Antonio School, a wonderful campus, campus that is now a ghost town. What if this project fails? The facilities will be built and waiting for some other enterprise to come, get the needed permissions, and change the character of the property even more. When KFA wanted to build their library, we didn't oppose it. We understood that it needed that sort of structure to preserve Krishnamurti's writing and legacy. We did not see that it could lead to the, to further expansion. Moving to retreat, moving the retreat up to camp status with its expanded use and ability to increase its facilities is a different matter. In a rural agricultural neighborhood with five acre zoning for any new house, the 11 acres that KFA has is just too small for their intended use. KFA has already numerous buildings to accommodate many of their activities. There is the Lindley Trust next door that they use for accommodations. We are against moving KFA up to camp status. We request that you grant their CUP extension and keep it the retreat it is now. Thank you.
Thank you, Claude. Next is Nancy Kent, followed by Rex Shroud.
Thank you for this chance, Planning Commission. My name is Nancy Kent, and I have been one of KFA's nearest residential neighbors for 38 years. There are many reasons why I'm against KFA moving up to camp status. This is just one of them. According to its CUP, KFA is limited to the number of people on its property at any one time. They mentioned earlier that that was not the case now, but it is the case now. They are limited. As a camp, that number of people will be greatly increased. To show compliance, KFA will be required to keep records, but there's been no county official whose job it is to monitor those records, and without oversight, we are not very confident the records will be accurate or up to date. Compliance oversight of the county in the past has been limited. It will be left to us as neighbors to monitor KFA's activities, and we have no real authority or recourse. We don't want to be the policeman of our neighborhood. Complaints directly to KFA have been largely ignored and corrective action, if any, has been very slow. For example, for years, KFA neglected their above-ground water system. We called them many times to let them know about leaking or spouting hoses. It usually took them so long to respond that my husband would go over and fix them himself because our water from Senior Canyon has always been so precious. I ask you to extend KFA's CUP status as a retreat, not as a camp. Even though KFA has already exceeded its square footage requirements as a retreat, the extra square footage was granted as an accommodation, not as preparation for their move up to a camp. We want to keep KFA as a retreat. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Next is Rex Shroud.
Hello, my name is Rex Shroud. I live at 1023 A McAndrew Road, across the street from the Krishnamurti Foundation. And I'm a librarian at the Krishnamurti Foundation. I work there two to three days a week, and I welcome guests who come to use the library, which it seems to me is perhaps anywhere from two people to maybe 20, 25 people. And my, let's see, what would you call it? My relationships with those people who come are they're, they're coming to look for something about answering questions of issues they have in life. There are a few rowdies that come now and then. And I think probably years ago, maybe 10 or 12 years ago, problem on the campus with rowdies who would come and stay there. But I think that's completely been resolved now that it's, now that it's listed as a Krishnamurti retreat, rather than just a retreat. And it seemed to me a lot of the problems with noise actually came from Thatcher School. Isn't that true? Thatcher School? So to me, it's, it's true that it came from Thatcher School, playing loud music. And then, yeah, anyway, I'm right across the street and I enjoy my neighbors. I enjoy relationships with my neighbors. And I don't know what to say about this. Forty-nine seconds to say something else. I hope this works out so in some way, the, the message of Krishnamurti has something to do perhaps with people understanding each other and seeing if somehow Yap Schluter and the administration at, at the foundation can work together in a compassionate way with the neighbors to allow this thing to move forward or to fail. So, thank you.
Thank you. Those are the, all the speakers that I have for the in-person speakers. I also received one statement card from Gabriella Assenya. She's stating that she opposed the project.
Secretary Lewis, do we have speakers on Zoom?
Yes.
Okay.
So, now we will be moving on. Our Zoom speakers are the, we have 19 Zoom speakers. We will start with Darcy Gray, followed by Sirwan Alimorandi, and then Terrence O'Connor.
I'm hearing an echo. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. My name's Darcy Gray. I'm currently a trustee of the foundation. I started working with the foundation and, and the school in 1978 as a teacher at the Oak Grove School. I had many other roles also. But I've been coming up to the foundation property for what, 46 years or so? And I'd like to just speak to the numbers of people that have been coming up there over the years, and also to the sorts of people, and a little bit about the philosophy. When Krishnamurti was still alive, you know, there'd be 35, 40 people during the spring when he was there, trustees and teachers, who would come to speak, talk together with Krishnamurti up on the foundation property. And anytime, for example, if I was late, I, I never, didn't know anybody was there until I got up to the room where people were gathering. That's just my point of view. And then continuing on, this, in the years following, there were talks with Dr. Bohm, who was associated with the foundation for a while, a physicist, and again, 20 people. And teachers continued to come up there and meet at the beginning of the year and meet with parents, and again, maybe 20 to 35 people, continually, year after year, decade after year. All the meetings were very quiet. There's no loud noise involved. I've actually never experienced any loud noise over the years of being there. Of course, I, you know, I'm not in touch with what happens consistently over the year. Anyway, and then I'd just like to say something about the philosophy of most of the people. And Krishnamurti himself was a vegetarian, not because of health or anything, but just in terms of caring for the environment and respect for life. And over the years, we brought many students up there, involved with tree planting and things like that, and throughout the, the whole of the valley there. I mean, there was a, I remember joining a cleanup crew on the Ventura River with the students there. So the whole intent is to help with the community and create a safe and loving environment. It's actually been a sanctuary, that foundation area. And I continue to do a program there, and when I'm up there with the people that are involved, they're very respectful. I haven't noticed any loud noises. And I often take walks around the property and around the surrounding neighborhood, and I haven't experienced much traffic at all, as some people have mentioned. I don't envision that changing. The only thing that's going to change is.
Secretary Lewis, are we at time?
Is it my turn? This is Sirwan.
Okay, I'm sorry. Where are we with the clock? That was time, I'm sorry. That was. But thank you for your comments. Do we have an echo? Can we? 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 For one time that I was driving to my lab in school, University of Kansas, the YouTube algorithm just showed one of the Krishnamurtis video to me, three minutes, and that three minutes really changed the course of my life. And that was a turning point in my life. Two, three years after that, actually, I found a job in Orlando. And one day I got a email from the foundation that they are looking for resident scholars. And that was really, really a happy and great news for me because I really wanted to listen and be in contact more with Krishnamurti's teachings and also people that they care about what he cares about, about the nature, about the human being connection and the community. I had an interview with Yaap and I got the scholarship to be there for six months to one year. But unfortunately, because of some family obligations that I had, I could not come and stay there. However, during the last two to three years, I have been visiting the foundation as a volunteer. And what I realize there is, the retreat is not only a haven of peace for all the individuals and the community there, that really they promote the value of quietness and they care about the environment. Personally, being there for more than two weeks, I haven't noticed any noise. I haven't noticed any traffic. I really met many peoples that they care about each other and about the land. I was a part of the olive tree expansion or like a planting there. And I'm really happy to be back again. Once a year, once a year for like a week or two to, you know, connect with people there, care about the land and definitely improve the environment for people that they are visiting into the library. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker. Our next speaker is Padhwick Wadwa, followed by Lea Long, and then Mahugani Lor.
Hello. Hello, may I start?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. My name's Pathik Wadwa. I am a medical scientist and I'm a professor at the University of California School of Medicine. I've been visiting the Krishnamurti Center in Ojai since nineteen eighty-nine. And for me, for over the past thirty years, this center has been an invaluable space for personal reflection and professional growth. The unique environment that this center offers allows me to reflect on larger questions relevant to both my personal life and my work in neuroscience. Krishnamurti's teachings are especially relevant in contemporary neuroscience. His insights into the nature of thought, conditioned brain responses, and the potential to live free from psychological conflict align very well with ongoing research in brain plasticity. Brain plasticity being the process of how experiences shape the brain and how new insights can bring about change. Krishnamurti emphasized awareness as a key to breaking habitual patterns, which very much resonate with our study of how the mind can change beyond conditioned responses. And his focus on perception, attention, and dissolving psychological barriers directly supports this kind of inquiry. So the Krishnamurti Center, I would submit, plays a crucial role in creating a space for such exploration. It's a peaceful, contemplative environment. It encourages reflection, not just on Krishnamurti's teachings, but on the challenges many of us encounter in our lives. In neuroscience, where the understanding of the mind is central, this center provides a rare opportunity to step back and explore essential questions about thought, perception, and insight. What, in my view, makes the center exceptional are its physical attributes and the deep sense of quiet that it fosters. While Ojai is known for its natural beauty, the center offers more than just a scenic appeal. Its architecture harmonizes with the landscape, promoting simplicity and openness. The quiet of this center is particularly meaningful in today's noisy world. It engages, it allows one to engage fully with the teachings and contemplate personal inquiry. So in light of the fact that the center is a vital resource, it supports the study of Krishnamurti and broader exploration, I hope these qualities will
Thank you, Pathik. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Our next is Lea Long.
Hi, everyone. My name is Lea Long. I first discovered the Krishnamurti Center by chance at the end of twenty nineteen, when I attended a retreat on a whim. I arrived with no expectations, but I was immediately struck by the beauty of the campus and the warmth of everyone I encountered there. For the first time, I found myself in a space where I could explore the essential questions of life in an open, non-religious environment that aims to learn more about ourselves outside of our conditioning, our prejudices, and our biases. This experience led me to become more deeply involved, and I'm now the communications director. The center has helped many individuals, including myself, to become more aware of who we truly are, our thoughts, emotions, and conditioned responses. The self-awareness is transformative, encouraging a deeper understanding of ourselves and our relationships with others, which ultimately promotes more compassionate and peaceful ways of living. Inherent in Krishnamurti's teachings are caring for and connecting with nature and each other. In addition to our in-person retreats and programs, we have a large online presence and offer monthly online programs, allowing us to extend the impact beyond our work in Ojai. And as one of the younger people at this meeting, I just want to implore everyone to consider what it's like to be a young person growing up in a world like this. There are so few places in the world where one can come to a place and feel invited to look at themselves in our society more deeply and discover if there's a different way we can go about life, if it's possible to actually create a better world by finally being able to see ourselves for what and who we are. Previously, I had only experienced something like this at a university, but those environments are usually only accessible to a privileged population. In a time marked by division and chaos, I truly believe that the Krishnamurti Center is a beacon of peace and understanding, contributing to the well-being of both the local community and the people worldwide. Its presence has been essential for myself and I thank many others for fostering a more harmonious and conscious world. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next one is Mahugani Lor.
Hi, I'm Mahugani. I'd just like to acknowledge my bias, I am not a neighbor, many of whom I exchange a friendly wave or greeting on my walks around the property and whom I hope to continue to have those friendly interactions with. I am both a visitor and a staff member at the foundation. I'm the database manager. I have a master's in library and information science, which I use to manage the database. Been there for two years. And the reason that I work there, the reason that I visit is for the serenity because walking the grounds allows me to have a meditative space and to enjoy the serenity that the foundation builds into the center. And I trust the administration and the plans that they will continue to embody that serene environment and to make a meditative space because that's the, that's the purpose, you know, is to provide that that by tranquility so that we can explore our minds and be contemplative. Regarding noise, the only time that I've heard noise, and there are four days a week.
Thank you, Mahugani. Your time is up.
Okay, bye.
Our next one is Andrea Holibacken, followed by Jeff Brown.
Did the timer start? I can't see it now. Oh, there it is. Hi, everyone. Thanks for hearing me today. My name's Andrea Holibacken, and I was a resident scholar at the KFA. First time, I think it was twenty seventeen. But I I loved it so much that I went back two more times. So for a total of a year. And for Ojai, like, I've never been somewhere so peaceful. I I dream of Ojai. It's like so beautiful. I love it so much. It's like a second home to me. It's kind of like if I'm going to go somewhere, that's where I would want to go. And what, what else do I have to say? Oh, yeah, so like, the stars are beautiful, the sunset, the light. And, you know, I really feel like honored to be on the land and specifically the KFA. Like, when I heard about the program, I just wanted to be in dialogue and go somewhere to be in person and have dialogue. And when you read Krishnamurti's definition, if you want to call it that, of dialogue, it is really something else. I've come to think of it as like another tense of language, there's like past, present, future, and dialogue. And the whole space is really, you can have dialogue in a, like a set, a sit to have a dialogue intentionally, or it just happens randomly. And one of Krishnamurti's quotes, he said, like, "When you change your consciousness, it changes the consciousness of all humanity." And I truly believe that's true. And in my different stays at the center, I actually met my partner. So without that, I wouldn't have met something, somebody who I'm like really, really resonant with. And not only that, going there without all the details basically saved my life. And like with the climate of today and so much confusion, like, the chance that anyone even wants to go to the resident scholar program is pretty rare, actually. It's a rare human. So giving that, giving that rare human that time and that space to do that, I'll say quickly, one time when I was there in twenty eighteen, there was a loud noise coming from the avocado farm next door. And my, my resident scholars and other people, a few of us walked up to see what it was. We were calling it the monstrosity, and it was some kind of like mining for water. And like, we all wanted to protect the peace of that place. That was the whole point of being there. I never heard anyone yell in a year. I never saw anything disrespectful. I was there for a year. And I love it, and it's amazing, and I hope more people get the opportunity because we need it.
Thank you, Andrea. The last speaker in Zoom, but not the least, is Jeff Brown.
Thank you very much for allowing me to speak today. My name is Jeff Brown. And I'd like to provide a very brief summary of my background and involvement with KFA and just emphasize why I think the CUP is of vital importance. I'm an accountant by training, and I previously owned American Marine Insurance located in Ojai on Bryant Circle. We employ dozens of people in the US and Canada. And at that time, I was the financial director and trustee of the Krishnamurti Foundation. So the kind of person that attends to the center would be a typical professional or scientist or anybody from any walk of life. As mentioned earlier, there's no smoking, there's no alcohol, meals are vegetarian, and the loudest music I ever heard was classical piano. We take our responsibilities seriously to provide a place for dialogue and self-inquiry and preserve the teachings of Krishnamurti. We do not exist as a place for entertainment, public lodging, or as a venue to fraternize or party. Anyone is welcome to visit anytime and verify firsthand our integrity as individuals dedicated to maintaining the legacy and the teachings of the founder. Despite the importance of the teachings and the relevance today, it is actually difficult to attract individuals, especially the young, who will need to commit to extended stays and volunteer work in the kitchen and garden. Our challenge then is not dealing with too many people, but attracting a few that are dedicated enough to have the time, means, and interest to put their lives on hold while they participate in dialogues and retreats. However, we feel we have something important to offer. Today's society has the most material wealth in history, is the safest, the best educated, best fed, most hygienic, yet mental illness, especially the young, meaning Generation Z, twenty-seven and under, is at an all-time high. Anxiety, depression, drug addiction, and suicide are all major issues. One anecdote may be a deep inquiry into what it means to be human, what it means to be alive, and whether inner transformation is possible for the human being and thus in our relationship to the world. The CUP is an attempt to create a quiet space where the younger generation can gather free from influences of social media, society, work, and school, and inquire into the nature of thought, human consciousness, and the transcendence. It's a challenge each individual needs to take, take up for themselves, their own individual responsibility, and awaken their innate intelligence to understand fear and desire, what freedom is, and discover a meaning beyond what society can offer. These are our children and grandchildren, and they need a place or refuge that will give them an opportunity to awaken their potential. We need you to help make this a reality. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. We have additional speakers.
How many more speakers do we have?
We have speakers who declined to, you know, to speak, but we also have speaker that went back and says that they would like to, you know, they would like
One more, is that right?
So right now, our last would be Seamus Morrison. But in total, we have three, four, five, six, seven, eight. We have eight Zoom speakers, and then we have twelve speakers in person. So a total of twenty.
We already have the in-person speakers, though. Right, so how many do we have left?
Just one, just Seamus Morrison.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Seamus, you're
Hi. Hi, my name is Seamus Morrison. And I was a residential scholar in twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two, I believe, to March of, so November twenty twenty-one to March of twenty twenty-two. And so it was so important for me to be able to immerse myself, myself in the readings and teachings of Krishnamurti as someone who, I went to the Oak Grove School, and so that was something that I always wanted to do. And so that was really important for me. And also being able to explore myself and my philosophy during this time was really essential. And being able to engage in dialogue and refine my thoughts in the company of others, none of that would have been possible without the Krishnamurti Center. And it allows people from all over to have the same experience that I did, expanding and refining themselves. And so that was really invaluable to me, especially during a time when, coming off of, coming out of COVID and when there is so much division in the world. As, as Krishnamurti says, you know, you have to identify the violence within yourself. And, you know, the consciousness that's within you is also within other people as, as people here have commented on before. That was just really valuable for me to come to terms with that. And that was something that I needed at that time. And so I know that others will, they need that experience as well. And so being able to provide that service is really, it's invaluable. And having additional centers that would allow more people to have that experience, more people that want to explore themselves, their philosophy, and their thoughts. And so after my experience at the KFA, which was full of growth and friendship and inquiry, so I, I realized that having other centers like this, like the one I attended, would, it would bring this life-changing experience to others. And it would also provide them with a bigger, larger, more comfortable place to have those um, bigger, larger, more comfortable place to have those experiences. And I just want to wrap up by saying that during my time there, which was a very peaceful time, um, devoted to quiet and, you know, inquiry, peace, I heard, there was very, very few noise incidents, uh, no noise incidents that I'm aware of.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, that concludes all the public speakers for item six B, PL seventeen zero zero one two and PL twenty-three zero zero four zero.
Thank you. We're going to take a brief break and we'll resume in five minutes. Thanks. We have two additional speakers that had registered, so we'll finish out with our two last public speakers on Zoom.
Okay, uh, we do have two more speakers in Zoom. Uh, one is, uh, Terrence O'Connor, followed by Dan Kilpatrick. Terrence, please unmute yourself. Okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm Terry O'Connor. Um, I'm a retired psychotherapist. And, um, I've, um, been volunteering at the, at the, at the Krishnamurti Foundation for years, facilitating dialogues mainly. Um, the dialogues explore matters such as love, fear, conflict, awareness, relationship, not intellectually, but as we experience them in ourselves. Krishnamurti said that we are the world, that each of us creates society. And that if society is going to change, it's up to us. And to do so, we need a deep understanding of ourselves and of our interconnectedness. It's fundamental to Krishnamurti's teachings that each of us must be alight unto ourselves. The dialogue facilitators facilitate these explorations, but we don't teach. There's no dogma. It's a journey of self-discovery that questions the limits of the self. Our dialogues are open to the public. There's no charge for the weekly dialogues and just a nominal fee for the week or weekend dialogues and programs. You know, there's a trend in the United States now, growing numbers of people are seeking spiritual meaning outside of organized religion. The Krishnamurti Foundation is a place where people can investigate for themselves, by themselves, or with others. I, I have to say, I, I, while I hear the concerns of the neighbors, I it seems to be a lot of anxiety about what's going to happen, but I simply don't recognize the place and the people described by the neighbors. Um, it is a place of quiet and the people who come there are adults, young adults or older adults who are quite respectful and quite interested in themselves and, in, in the welfare of humanity. So all this business about wine bottles and whiskey bottles and stuff, I haven't seen that in decades that I've been coming there. Um, so I, I, it's a wonderful program. It's an important one and I hope you'll support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Terrence. Next is Dan Kilpatrick.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, very good. Um, so I'm, um, to introduce myself, I'm a retired professor, um, back in Massachusetts. Um, and I've had interactions with the KFA dating back to before two thousand. Um, and over the past ten-plus years, I participated, um, in Ojai um, as a facilitator, uh, for, um, dialogues as, that includes also, or include, included also, um, uh, residential students. And I'd really like to, to speak mainly to that, um, because um, when I first began, uh, doing this, uh, I, I started out interacting with, with, uh, the residential student. And one thing that, that, uh, impacted me really had an effect on me was realizing that here you had, uh, very serious-minded young people who were willing to spend and devote six months to a year's worth of their life to exploring themselves and, um, trying to understand themselves and doing it in a way in which they're also exploring what it means to be, to interact with other human beings. Really what it means to live together as human beings. And, uh, I think this has tremendous value, especially in our society, uh, today, as others have already spoken to. I mean, I think it's, it's, um, a very, an extremely worthwhile program that, that is worth one, uh, supporting and two, expanding on to the extent that it, that it's feasible and practical. Because more, there's, there's a great need for this, as others have also pointed out. Um, and to, uh, another thing I'd like to mention is, so I, I also do, have done, um, uh, uh, in addition to in-person programs that I've done out at the KFA, I, I've also done, uh, pro, I also do programs that are online and just to speak to the, 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 the aspect of online as an alternative, it's a wonderful opportunity for people to get together who, who are, you know, a large, a great distance apart. But there is something unique about being together in the same physical space. And, uh, where there, a sense of sharedness can come over participants. Um, and that's, that has an effect on us. That's been my own experience. And, uh, so I think it's important to, to recognize that and the value of having a residential program where, where people are, can come together, uh, in a physical way directly, uh, interacting with one another, uh, to learn about ourselves. Um, I think I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. That concludes all our speakers for this item.
Thank you, Secretary Luce. Uh, would the applicant like to present any rebuttal? No? Okay, thank you. Would staff like to present any closing remarks?
Good morning. Good morning, Plating Fishers. My name is Jennifer Trunk. I'm the manager for the Residential Permit Section. I want to thank everyone who's here and attendants, including all of the neighbors. I embrace the public process and I really appreciate your input, your comments, and your inquiries. To Keith Nightingale, representing the East End Neighborhood Association, including Linda Thomas, Michael Weaver, Clark Kent, and others residing near the project site and who are a part of the East End Neighborhood Association, I've heard a lot of concern regarding this facility being classified from a retreat to a camp. And I'd like to just clarify the ordinance. So to begin, the non-coastal zoning ordinance has specific development standards for retreats. The two that KFA is hitting up against is sleeping accommodations for more than twenty people and a maximum of two thousand square feet for all other buildings. Buildings such as kitchens, dining areas, conference rooms, storage, and the like. KFA exceeded that back in nineteen ninety-seven. The neighbors are correct. It's at that time, planning should have reclassified the retreat, KFA, to a camp because it was at that time, the Archives Building exceeded the maximum square footage. Following that, a permit adjustment was done for the yoga studio. It wasn't caught there at that time. Currently, we have a proposal before us where we can remedy the inconsistency with the code and reclassify it to camp. Now, the, there's concern that as a camp, it will expand. The camp development standards are structured that daily and overnight population is a direct reflection of the zone and the acreage of the property. However, I want to emphasize that condition number one, which is the detailed project description, highlights exactly how many daily and overnight participants, attendees, and guests are allowed onsite. Condition number eleven keeps the condition compliance account in effect. And that account ensures that the permaD is in compliance with their permit conditions. And if there are complaints, the, this compliance, this condition compliance account gives us the authority to investigate those complaints. It also allows us to audit the permit every three years. Condition number seventeen requires that KFA identify a contact person. And condition number eighteen is a resolution of those complaints, the events reports, the logs that planning can request at any time. Now, I understand corrective action is slow, but we have to rely on our conditions of approval to ensure that KFA is a good servant of their permit. There was a question from Mr. Greg Thomas regarding the fire suppression and, uh, fire flow and pressure. We do have someone here from and pressure. We do have someone here from Ventura County Fire Protection District, who I will have respond to that specifically. But I also want to mention that condition number 32 requires KFA to submit a public safety plan. And in that public safety plan, they have to provide evidence that they have accurate and adequate evacuation and safe access routes in case of an emergency, and both fire and planning take a look at that. Condition number 69, 70, and 71 address fire flow, fire hydrants, and sprinklers, and that is enforced by the fire department. With that said, I'm going to defer to our representative, Nick, forgive me your last name, who's on Zoom, and can respond to their review of fire suppression for the project.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Nick Resendez, representing Ventura County Fire Department. I was contacted about two years ago by the county and by Jensen Design regarding the fire flow requirements for the project. The conditions of approval state that they require 1,500 GPM for two hours, based on the California Fire Code. And at the time, there was discussion between the water purveyor, Senior Canyon Mutual Water Company, having to obviously comply with that. So, they reached out to us to make sure what the requirement was. We deduced it was indeed 1,500 GPM. And there was a meeting that was done in accordance with our requirements to make sure that they were in line with that. So, they reached out to Casitas Mutual Water Company for some neighboring tanks, and there was discussion about using booster pumps in order to meet that requirement. So, just to be clear, the condition is that they need to certify that fire flow at the time of the building permit application process. So, we will be doing another review and test of the fire flow verification in order for us to approve the official building permit when it comes time for that. Additionally, I believe that the water purveyor has completed a updated water availability letter and an agreement, an MOA with, or excuse me, MOU with Casitas as well, in order to make sure that everything is in place. And I believe also Jensen or the civil engineer is also present for any particular questions on how that process was done for the study. But our condition is clear that we will require them to show they can meet that in order for them to proceed with construction. And welcome to answer any direct questions or follow-ups as well.
Does staff have any additional remarks?
No, but we're here for questions. If you have any additional questions, thank you.
Does any commissioner have questions of staff, the applicant, or any member of the public? Commissioner McPhail.
Yeah, I, excuse me. I'd like a little bit of clarification. I believe it was the executive director said that they would love to have students stay for several months. Is this on the main campus, or is there another campus where you would house students for several months?
That's on, yeah. The CUP, you can only stay a 30 days at a time. But so, if we want to have, if somebody wants to stay for longer within that permit, they have to leave after 30 days, but they could come back.
So, they would have to come and go?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Fire got answered. I have a question of the applicant. There were several statements made that you do not respond to complaints. Is that true or false?
Any complaint that I receive, I respond to. I, in my, I have been here as executive director for, since 2011, 13 years, almost 14 years. I've never had a complaint of a whiskey bottle thrown somewhere. It hasn't received me. So, I cannot respond to complaints that I haven't received, yeah.
Okay. Please stay there for a second.
Yeah.
One of the Zoom speakers said that when he comes, he stays for two to three weeks at a time.
Correct.
If that's correct, that's violating your CUP.
No, guests can stay up to, with the current CUP, guests can stay up to 60 days.
Oh, 60 days?
Yeah, correct.
Okay. And then one Zoom speaker said he stayed for one year.
Then he comes and goes, if he has been there for a longer period. He has to. We have, if you're there for 60 days, then the 60 days max, and then you have to, or he is a staff member. If he becomes a staff member, you can, we can have five staff members living on campus. So, if he is a staff member for that period, he can be there for a year or longer.
Okay. Once they reach their 60 days, how long do they have to be gone before they can come back?
The rest of the year.
Pardon me?
For the rest of the year. For the current CUP, I think it's 60 days in a row, and then you have to go, and you can't come back for the rest of the year.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Commissioner Boydston?
I'm interested in maybe some more conversation or clarification on the heritage zone. And are there restrictions in the CUP about what you can do or not do in the heritage zone? And then, to follow up on that, the boundaries of the heritage zone, why is not more of the site in the heritage zone?
It does go to the Cultural Heritage Board when it is considered a historic resource. The Cultural Heritage Board designated the area that they felt was historic. That captured the majority of the historic buildings, not the new Archives Building, because that came much later. And if you notice in the site plan, they really wanted to preserve that historic district, so they shifted the new development in the central portion outside of that historic district. Anything that occurs, and there's actually conditions in the permit, has to have oversight by the Cultural Heritage Board to make sure that these are in support of that historic resource.
So, there's no direct restriction that says you will not add additional buildings in the heritage zone or development?
I can't speak to Cultural Heritage Board, but if they were to propose something within that district, they would be reviewing it for, you know, whether or not it's compatible.
So, we don't have a finished sort of action by the Heritage Board?
I believe that there's a couple of conditions where they still have to return to the Cultural Heritage Board to ensure that their proposed modifications are acceptable.
And I would just make the point that I think not just the buildings make this a heritage zone, but the entire piece of property. So, I would, I would sort of put it out there that I'd like to see more property in the heritage zone. And maybe it's a donut in the middle that allows for more buildings to be done, but not anywhere else, without really scrutinizing it.
And just to further clarify, a follow-up question about that. There are no, there wouldn't be any new potential structures permitted beyond what's presented to us here?
That's correct. Okay.
Any other questions? Vice Chair Kessley?
Just to follow up on that question from, I just wanted to confirm, in, under the current, or if the CUP is granted, if they wanted to expand, would it have to come back here first?
That's correct. It's a discretionary conditional use permit, and that would require a minor modification, which would go through the discretionary process.
So, it would come back here?
It would be a public process.
Thank you.
Let me just follow up on that, because I realize it's a public process, but it doesn't necessarily become a public process that involves the planning commission. So, what's the threshold for when it comes to us versus the director?
Thank you, Commissioner Boydston. So, the code says if you have a conditional use permit or a planning, planned development permit, there's three ways to modify it. If it's a minor change, we use it like a 10% rule. It's called a permit adjustment, and that's facilitated by staff. It's still discretionary. It still has a 30-day review period. It still is subject to an appeal. It just doesn't warrant a hearing, and it's administrative. If the neighbors would want to be on a contact list for a particular CUP, we keep those on a list and inform them of any discretionary actions for those permits. Now, the next level is a minor modification, and that is, it exceeded that 10% rule. And you have to go back into the environmental document, because you have to revise the findings. Maybe it was exempt the first time, but the second time around, it needed an ND or an MND. Those environmental findings were triggered. Then, the top tier is a major modification, and that's like a brand-new CUP. The change is so expansive that we have to look at it more comprehensively and broadly. And that top tier would be going back to planning commission. Minor mod, time extension, little beyond the 10% rule, would be planning director. And that is a noticed public hearing, albeit it's the planning director and not the commission.
Did you have any, but again, to follow up, if there's any proposed increase in square footage, is that a minor modification or a major modification?
So, again, we got to think about that 10% rule, right? So, if they were to come in with 100 square feet, they were adding a bathroom to a building, right? That falls under a permit adjustment, right? It's happening in disturbed area. It's not going to generate any additional public, right? That would fall under a permit adjustment. But if it exceeded that 10%, maybe they wanted to do another, you know, set of cabins. By all means, that would elevate it to a minor, and it would open it up to a public hearing.
And is the 10%, what is that calculated off of? The total square footage of disturbed area?
No, of maximum, so every lot is given maximum building coverage, right? And so, if I have 1,000 square foot maximum building coverage, that 10% rule would be at 100, right?
Based on the legal law?
Exactly, exactly.
I'm sorry, there are no questions from the public at this time, only commissioners. Counsel, can you address, provide some guidance? Thank you.
Yeah, just generally, we hold these public meetings. We give the public an opportunity to speak at public comment time, which has occurred. Now is the time for deliberation amongst the commissioners. They can ask questions, but it's generally not an interactive process. The public's here to observe. They've had, the public has had a chance to speak, but at this time, it's deliberation and questions from the commissioners at this point. Thank you.
Mr. Kessley? Just to clarify too, if, with any modification, minor or administrative, there is an opportunity to appeal.
Absolutely.
An appeal then brings it back to the planning commission, correct?
Right, depending on the tier. So, if it was a planning director approved minor modification or permit adjustment, it would elevate it to the planning commission. If the planning commission were the decision-maker for a major, and it was appealed, it would go to the board of supervisors.
Any other questions by commissioners? Oh, what, Commissioner Boydston?
Just to follow up on the 10% rule. So, is the 10% based on the existing square footage at the time of the CUP, or the maximum square footage allowed by zone? And then, if, just as a follow-up, what is the difference in the allowable square footage if it goes to be designated as a camp, if you, if you take that as the highest threshold?
So, it would be existing square footage? Okay, that's your first question. And then your second question, if you can remind me.
Does the camp allow for a higher square footage than what's existing?
So, like I said, the way the camp looks at square footage, right, that's maximum building coverage, right? And in the RE, I'll have 25%, 25% maximum building coverage in the RE zone.
So, 25% of 11 acres?
Correct.
Okay. And then, and then on the appeal process, the public can appeal any of these, the minor, the three steps that you mentioned, and it will come to us?
Correct.
Any other questions? I just had a few. With regard to, I have a question about the perimeter. This is a question for, I think I can, staff can answer this. Is there perimeter fencing now and/or proposed as part of the improvements?
Commissioner Garcia, there's no fencing proposed now. There is a condition that requires the installation of impermeable wildlife fencing along the eastern property line, if that is going to happen in the future. And there's no existing fencing. There are some historical, I guess what you call walls with rocks. They are historic.
So, to clarify, is, so perimeter fencing is, does not exist? It's just open boundaries between property lines?
Correct.
Okay. And is it, oh, would they, you can please come to the podium to answer the question. Thank you. We can bring up the applicant for, or a member of the public for questions. Thank you.
There's a chain-link fence all around the property. There's a dry-stacked wall on the roadside, so that's the fencing. And this chain-link fence is about, I think, four feet, five feet at all.
And can you respond to the comments that we've heard from the public about people wandering beyond the property limit?
Well, the chain-link fence came in, I estimate, maybe five years ago, six years ago, and since then, it's not possible to walk to other, to other properties.
Okay, thank you for, and actually, can you clarify who installed the fence? And is it, is the entire property perimeter secured?
So, the one on the north, I think it's north side, that's with our neighbors, they are, they have, they installed the fence. That's a lower fence. And then there's now a higher fence on the rest of the property, and that's installed by our other neighbor who owns an orchid there.
Are all three property lines fenced in?
North, east, that's, the roadside is a stacked, is stacked wall, stacked wall.
Okay, okay, thank you. Can you, can you actually stay, I have a follow-up question about, can you address what, what is the oversight and management of the property? What does that entail?
Well, we have a caretaker who's overseeing in the night when there are guests, and we have a reception. So, somebody who runs the retreat, who receives calls, and who manages guests. And then for the library, as the one person who spoke, who's gone now, he oversees the library when people come, and he meets them and greets them and tells them where things are.
That's what I'm asking, is if there's a full-time property manager who's providing oversight for the property during daytime, you know, during the eight to five, you know, daytime hours?
There's a reception. There's a reception area for the retreat. So, everybody would go to the retreat if there's a question.
With regard to the designated point of contact, who is that person?
Well, we, the CUP is not in place yet, but we will appoint somebody within our organization, a staff member, and we will list that on, on the website, who that will be.
Okay. And has there been a designated contact person tune up to today?
No, no. But if we receive emails, our contacts are online. Anybody can email us, and that will be read, and that will be going to the Anybody can email us, and that will be read, and that will be going to the staff. The staff will respond to that.
Okay, because there seems to be some concern and maybe a gap in communication for other members of the public who want to be in contact. So I wanted to give you an opportunity to respond to that and/or staff about how that can be improved moving forward.
Yeah, so what the plan is, as soon as the CUP is approved, we will create a website where people can log, and all the complaints will be logged, and our response will be logged, and the county can look at it at any time they wish.
Is that, question for staff, is that actually codified in the project conditions of approval?
Thank you. So for corrective action, as I mentioned, we have Condition 17, that requires a contact person, and Condition 18, which requires resolution of complaints, and for KFA to keep a log of all attendees, participants, and overnight guests. And that log can be asked for at any time by the Planning Division.
Okay, thank you. That concludes my questions. Thank you. I will now close the public hearing. Do we have any further discussion by commissioners or a motion? Commissioner Boynton?
I have a question, and I don't have my calculator up here. But, not to beat a dead horse, but what is 25% of 11 acres in square feet? And then how many square, what's the difference in what they're proposing as being in this CUP?
So, proposed development is 10,931 square feet. Total onsite development is 29,261 square feet.
Is that the 25%?
No. I'm going to find out what that out is. Well, that's the difference. That's, that's, that's it. We need to, if you could just give me a moment.
Right.
I need a calculator. Approximately 2.75 acres is 25%.
So 100,000?
That in square feet?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't do acres. So once we make it a camp, they can have 120,000 more square feet, possibly through a series of reviews?
So, these are discretionary permit actions. And while the maximum building coverage says you get 25% if you're in RE, that doesn't mean you'll get the full 119,790 square feet. That's a maximum. This is discretionary, and the constraints of the parcel dictate how much square footage the property can accommodate. As we've spoken about, we've hit up four trees. We're hitting up a historical district. There are certain constraints that limit maximum square footage for a property. The code is just saying, this is the cap. That doesn't necessarily mean the property is guaranteed the full maximum square footage.
So, so the cap is based on the zoning, not whether it's a camp or a retreat?
For maximum building coverage, that's correct. For maximum building coverage, that is correct. Sorry. For maximum building coverage, the code says, this is your zone. This is the percent for maximum building coverage.
And are we changing the zone as part of this?
We are not.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank, thanks again to staff. Thank you. Any discussion or a motion by commissioners? Commissioner Boynton?
We've heard all morning long how nature is such an important part of the center and the ideas behind it, and yet we're taking out four, four mature oak trees. I don't understand how that goes with the center's philosophy and really have a hard time supporting taking out trees for buildings.
A question for staff about that. Is there an opportunity or an option to look at other mitigating measures beyond saplings? That would be more, I mean, can you maybe address why sapling over a different potential mitigating measure? And I guess that would be a question for Commissioner Boynton as well, if you had an alternative in mind?
Yeah, move the buildings.
Is there an option to move buildings without impacting trees, given the number?
I'll have the applicant address that.
So, is the microphone on? Yeah. So there are four trees. Three are next to the existing building, and they're not impacted by the new building. But in the grading process, the expert says we might, they might get lost in the grading process. I think, I personally, I've said that it must be possible to save those three. The other one, one is really in the middle of the building, and that will be a problem. But those three, I feel, we could, if you pass something that you say, hey, that's, you keep those, then I think we can do that.
Well, just a comment, you have a very, very competent architect. And, and I've seen a lot of projects that build around oak trees and reconfigure buildings and split them apart and do, do all kinds of creative things. And it seems like this is the perfect project, your center, with its philosophies, to be really creative in dealing with nature and grading.
I would, I would like to do so. Yeah, that's the intent, for sure.
I have a question.
By Commissioner Samlin?
Is it possible to move the trees? Like, still keep them alive?
I don't know. I'm not a tree expert, but I haven't seen that. But as I said, it will be, we very likely could save three, and there's one that might be really an issue. But maybe, I mean, the architect could look at it again. I mean, I don't know how we want to move that forward.
Staff? So there are four trees being removed, and I pulled up the arborist's report. Tree 19 is DBH 4.5, but the single trunk is shredded and damaged. Tree 21 is, is one of the larger trees. Tree 63 has a rating of 70% due to the crowding and species rating of 90%, meaning there are 72 trees that this project isn't going to encroach upon. There's a lot of trees, but four of them need to be removed. The fourth one, tree number 64, has a trunk diameter of three and a half inches. And so really, it's tree 21, which is the largest of the trees, that we should be trying to do the workaround, as that is the one that is, one of the, it calls that out as the second-largest tree, oak tree in the report. So if we can, now, we have to comply with the Ventura County Fire Department standard for access. But I'm sure if we work with the fire department, we can try to protect this tree in place. That is the most formidable tree of all four.
And I assume that tree is the tree that's beside the structure, not entirely?
Stands inside the southeast circle of the archives building courtyard. That's where it's located.
Okay. Okay, is there a proposed motion?
No. I was just gonna respond to Commissioner Boynton. Three and a half inch diameter is a very young oak tree. We're not talking about 100-year-old oak tree here, or 200 years. We're probably talking maybe about a 10-year-old tree.
Yeah, I'm just concerned about the largest one. Yeah. And I know saplings are done for oak trees because saplings grow better, oak trees and saplings grow better than planting 60-inch box or the bigger ones.
Right. Is it, a question for the applicant. Are you willing to, do you think it's feasible for you to do whatever you can to preserve that tree that we're discussing, tree number 21?
Yes, I think so.
And a question for staff. Do you have any proposed language that you think we could reasonably include to set that as a goal?
Absolutely. If you could give us a few-minute break to incorporate that language, that'd be great.
Five minutes?
That'd be great.
Commissioner Boynton, do you have?
Yeah, I would, I would just try and make that condition very strong, that you do whatever you can, you save it. And that includes if it needs pruning or an additional report by the arborist to treat it. But it's all too easy to say, well, if you can do it, and oops, we can't do it. So, you know, I've seen it in grading too, where they put all these protections around trees, and oops, a bulldozer actually hit it, and it's gone. So it needs to be really solidly written to keep.
Chair, Chair Garcia, before we take the break, are there any other discussion points in your deliberations before we work on that one? If there was a second item, we'd want to try to work on that for you as well during the break.
Commissioner Boynton?
I'd like to see a condition where this CUP is contingent on putting, putting a six-foot fence all the way around on all their property lines.
I was glad to comment about that, too.
And not depending on neighbors' fences.
Have a perimeter, if we could have a condition that requires the applicant to maintain perimeter fencing, so the property is secured?
With the highest level fence that the county allows on a property line.
Thank you. We get the direction, we'll prepare that for you.
I also, on the, the point of contact, I think it's important to, can we ask for, and maybe this is already contemplated, but whoever's designated as a point of contact needs to have an appropriate level of oversight and responsibility. And for some projects I've seen, like, can we ask to see the job title, job description, or just know who is this person? To know that it's not just, you know, a, someone who's at the property for, you know, an hour a day? Can we strengthen that to know that it's actually going to accomplish the intent? Commissioner Boynton?
Yeah, I've even seen it go as far as having a 24-hour monitoring line so that it isn't, well, nobody's there, they don't come in until nine in the morning. So something that, that if your operating hours are going to be into the night, that there's someplace to call when it, if, if things get out of hand.
And maybe that could be more than one person? It sounds like there's a caretaker in the evening hours, so we need to know who the contacts are? Maybe it's one person during the day, one person, the caretaker in the evening hours? But that, that there's a clear line of communication?
Understood, okay. You're gonna probably need several minutes for us to do that. We'll go into the back and address that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Staff, would you like to present?
Yes, thank you, planning commissioners. Staff has updated three conditions. These conditions are included in Exhibit 5 of your staff report. Starting with condition number 17, the contact person. The purpose to designate persons responsible for responding to complaints. The rest of the condition remains the same. Moving to condition number 31, fencing, and it should say, and fencing adjacent to wildlife corridors. To mitigate impacts to wildlife migration corridors from fencing and preserve the functional connectivity and habitat quality of surface water features due to the vital role they play in providing refuge and resources for wildlife pursuant to Section 8102-0 of the Ventura County NCZO. And to prevent trespass onto neighboring properties. The requirement, the permittee shall ensure that all new fences or walls adjacent to the eastern property line, which is adjacent to the open space, just want to emphasize direction, are permeable to wildlife. A seven-foot fence shall be installed and maintained along the remaining property boundary on the north, south, and western property lines. Except for gates associated with gate supports components, a wildlife permeable fence that includes- includes one or more of the following design features is considered wildlife impermeable, and that just provides the design standards included in the condition. I actually have two more condition revisions. Condition number thirty-three, which is also a mitigation measure, is stated as follows. Purpose, the purpose of this mitigation measure is to reduce potential significant impacts from the removal of three protected heritage size coast live oak trees and the replacement of those trees pursuant to the Arborist report, and the protection in place of tree number twenty-one. The remaining condition language stays the same. And lastly, there is a condition that is assigned by the Ag Commissioner's Office related to the western property line, and that, I'm sorry, the eastern property line, which is adjacent to the Ag, and that is the vegetative screen. And so we just emphasize that the permittee shall install and maintain a hundred and fifty-foot vegetative screen with the seven-foot fence that will meet the physical characteristics outlined in the Ventura County Ag buffer policy. And so that will provide a seven-foot perimeter fence along the entire project site. Thank you.
Could you scroll up? Further. Did you mean to under, on thirty-one, fencing, fencing, did you mean, what did you mean?
Okay, fencing for the title, yes. We'll just call it fencing.
Okay.
Yeah, that's better.
Thank you. I had a comment, actually, so my intent was proposing a primary and secondary point of contact for 24-hour coverage, not necessarily property manager. I don't know that that's specifically the role that the center would have onsite, but I'm interested in hearing from the applicant shortly. Are there any comments first from Commissioners? Or questions about the revised condition language? Okay, so I'd like to bring back the applicant for your comment on the amended language. Is this, does this work, is this going to work for, can you make this work?
Yeah, the only question I have, it's about wildlife corridors, which of course from our side, we're more than happy to install, but there are already existing fences, so that means that we have to cut open neighborhood fences in order to allow wildlife to go. So we can do on our side, we can do the wildlife, but are we, we are not obliged to, how do we deal with neighbors who don't have that?
I'd like to direct that question, can you refer to the comment on the wildlife?
That's a really good point, Japp. So we have the west, north, and south seven-foot fence, and that currently exists?
Yes, so on the north side and on the east side, that has, is already fenced.
Okay.
Not with seven feet, I think it's currently six feet, on the east side and four feet on the, on the north side.
Okay, and is the commission directing us for a seven-foot fence? Are we replacing the existing fence with seven-foot fence?
Well, I can't replace because it's neighbors, but I have to add the seven-foot fence.
You'll be adding, so what you've explained is off-site?
Yes.
Okay, so that, that makes sense, that makes sense. So with the wildlife permeable, the vegetative screen would go along the eastern property line?
Correct.
So we should eliminate the wildlife permeable, seeing that we're going to do a perimeter seven-foot fence around the entire property. It, it's outside the HCWC, it would be nice to have wildlife permeable, but we already have to have the vegetative screen. Now, the vegetative screen with the urban ag buffer policy says, you give me 300 feet buffer or a vegetative screen with a fence. And so the direction was, we would like to see the 150 with the fence to provide that, that barrier for potential trespass, seeing that visitors do wander the property, and they won't know that they're off-site potentially.
Did you have a comment, Mr. Boydson?
Yeah, I just had to comment, I understand that some of the neighbors have fences of varying kinds, but I think it's important that this property have its own fence that it maintains even at doubling up on fences.
I guess a question I have is, is the existing, would the fence be on property line?
Yeah, it will be on our property.
Sorry, I meant, is the existing fencing on the property line?
Correct.
Okay. So personally, I would, I would support only to the extent that there's, you know, a remove, a neighbor removes fencing, that that new fence get installed. Otherwise, it might not be exactly on property line.
It's my understanding that there are, there are neighbor, neighbors have fencing on their property, not so much that, and they're relying on that to keep people off neighboring properties. But I think it's important as part of this, that even if it doubles up, that they have the responsibility to put in their own fence that they can maintain and not depend on the neighbors maintaining their fence.
Okay. Any other comments on the proposed language or reactions?
I'd like to ask one question because the northeast, northeast and south side, fine, but on the west side, it has stacked, that's where the roadside is, it has stacked walls. I think it will be very ugly from the street if we put there an eight-foot fence. I mean, if we are obliged, we'll do, but it's, it will be an eyesore, it wouldn't accomplish much.
I wasn't, I wasn't addressing the front, street frontage for fencing.
Okay, agreed.
I have updated language.
And is it a seven-foot fence or a six-foot?
Seven foot is now the number.
Seven foot is allowed ministerially.
Okay. Okay. Any other comments or questions on your, on your part?
No, you had a question about the contact person, was there anything?
Yes, right. Is that language workable for you, property manager, or, or the original language said contact person?
Yeah, we will have a contact person, just to remember, I mean, backup, we are very small organization, we're just seven staff, right? I mean, to rotate people 24 hours, I mean, of course, it's only by phone, but I think we can do one person, make sure that one person is available on phone, that, that I think we can, can accomplish, yeah.
At least one person during the 24-hour period?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
During the day, there's many people, there are people in the office and there are people in the reception, but it's in the evening, to have double people, that would be very difficult for a small staff like what we have.
Is twenty-four, a 24-hour period manageable, though, to have at least one person available in a 24-hour period?
Yeah, for emergencies, we always have one phone line open, also for guests, if something happens in the night.
Okay.
So we can use the same, same phone number, yeah.
So I think the revision would be contact person, a primary or, the point is, we want to have a point of contact available during the 24-hour period.
Primary and secondary contact persons, in case one is out.
I think we also wanted that contact person to have some authority to make an immediate change or, or see to an immediate problem rather than just getting a, a sort of message.
Right.
Yeah, for most, for most situations, you know, like, if we exclude the night, but during the daytime, they will contact me, of course, or another senior staff, and they will deal with the problem. In the night, if there's, if there's something that is worthwhile calling for in the night, of course, it will be pushed higher up, and they will contact me, and I'm available in the night for emergencies.
Okay.
Well, I think you should be available for people walking on other people's property in the middle of the night and throwing wine bottles around.
If we call, then the caretaker will go out or call the police.
That person just needs to be consistent, not just, oh, you call him or you call.
Yeah. Yeah, but that's, we are a small organization, it's very difficult to have that. What I can say is the process that I just described, where we have, we have a caretaker, if, in, if we look at the specific situation in the night, we get a call, there are people walking on the neighbor's land, and they could be people from our guest, who are our guests, then we can, the caretaker will take action then, if it's, if it's our guest. Of course, it's very difficult to determine if people are walking on the, on the neighbor's land if it's guests, you know, I mean, I'm just saying, it's, it's a complex thing. Normally, we call the police for something like that, because they're not supposed to be on other people's property.
Mr. Kessley, do you have a comment?
I just, because I deal with this on a regular basis, I'm a property manager, and I'm on call 24/7, I think it's just, it's just important that there is somebody available to take a phone call that can escalate it up to a person that can make a decision.
Correct.
My employee doesn't make those decisions, she calls me in the middle of the night, there is a problem, you need to take care of it, and so I would assume that's what we're asking for.
That's it, that's it. And I can, I can agree with that, I can, we can comply with that.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Before we conclude, I know we've had several members of the public here to speak, I'd like to offer up the opportunity for, I think our first speaker introduced himself as, as a neighborhood representative, I'm not sure if he's still here, but I'd invite you to come up and speak and offer a comment, since we've amended conditions, you could have an additional three minutes, up to three minutes, if you'd like.
Which, as with the overall result of what this CUP does, we do have some specific points we think are probably in error that I would ask you to look at first. We're not aware of any agreement between Casitas, Senior Canyon, or Krishnamurti in writing about water provision. It's stated that it exists, but we've been to Casitas and they can't find it, I work for Senior Canyon and I know we don't have it. So I'm concerned about that particular point. That aside, the water flow issue, we think is perhaps done on paper as opposed in fact. There's only two water sources for Krishnamurti. One comes from Senior Canyon, which is pure gravity-fed, and the other is potentially, but not at the moment, connected to, to the two Casitas tanks that are right next door to Krishnamurti. To get 1,500 GPI for two hours, it's totally impossible physically, I know the pipes can't do it. You'd have to have a full-on pump head at the tank to get that volume and pressure. So I would ask that there actually be a physical test that confirms that figure before you approve this, and that in fact, there is a written agreement that water would be provided to Casitas, excuse me, to Krishnamurti. That aside, I would go back to, there are some other factual issues, but I wouldn't deal with them now. The issue is more of a subjective one in terms of what does this agreement do for the neighborhood as a whole? We've talked about Krishnamurti, and, you know, we have no objection to Krishnamurti per se, you know, a lot of us read the stuff, you know, I knew the guy. The issue is what the physical property does to the neighborhood as a whole, and that's what we would ask you to consider in addition to just the basic facts, but I would ask you to look at the fire issue before you approve this. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. Now, we are back to Commissioner discussion and/or a motion. Commissioner Boydson.
I would just note that this is really the beginning of, of the process, and, and to get a permit to do a building will take, through engineering and the fire department will take, I'm out of time or I'm getting an award.
You got my time, go ahead.
So, that, that in order to get a building permit to build anything, they'll need the fire flow tests to be done to the satisfaction of the fire department, county fire, and they're very stringent. Also, the water purveyor, you'll need to have a letter from the purveyor saying water is available to build anything. So I would just sort of counsel everyone that this is a process that starts allowing them to move forward to do this additional studies that allows them to build. It doesn't give them point-blank, carte blanche, go ahead and start building tomorrow. So it's a beginning of a process, the process is long, and it's very detailed.
And to follow up on that, I think specifically, we heard from Nick Resendez on the fire flow physical test check that is required prior to permit issuance, so thanks for addressing that. Any other Planning Commissioner comments?
I'll make a motion to approve staff's recommendation with the amendments that they presented.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you, we have a motion by.
Sorry, Chair Garcia, Commissioners, I do not think we got to the very last condition, so we got through condition seventeen, thirty-one, thirty-three.
We ended with the, sorry. We ended with the contact person because you had questions of the applicant, and so I wanted to go over two additional revisions to conditions, if you don't mind.
That we didn't already review?
No, we, we looked at, the first one we looked at was the contact person, then we looked at fencing, and we revised that to now say, to prevent trespass onto neighboring properties, we excluded the wildlife permeable, and the requirement is, except for street frontage, a seven-foot fence shall be installed and maintained along the property boundary. And then, condition number thirty-three, which we have not spoken about, is the, maybe we did, the retention and the protection of the tree twenty-one, okay? And then the last one was, this is condition number fifty-seven, this is the ag vegetative screen, and we just want to make sure that the seven-foot fence goes along that vegetative screen, so this reads, requirement, the permittee shall install and maintain a hundred and fifty-foot vegetative screen with seven-foot fence that will meet the physical characteristics of the urban, and so on. Thank you.
Well, thank you for recapping. Okay.
Madam Chair, if I might, Assistant County Counsel David Atul, just given that brief discussion, I'd suggest we put up the revisions one more time before a motion is taken and before a vote is taken, just so it's clear exactly what the proposed modifications are.
Okay.
That are being voted on, thank you.
As, as the motioner, I, I think we're pretty clear.
I, well, I think if they can just put it up, I believe that that was discussed, that there are some, seems to be some post-discussion slight revisions unless I'm mistaken, I just want to make sure Commissioner McPhail, you as the motion maker, that the revisions on the screen accurately represent what your motion reflects, and that's all I'm trying to do, just for clarity, so if there's anything, if it looks fine to you, then it's, it's fine, but I just wanted to make sure it's clear.
I'm clear.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for sharing that screen again. We have a motion by Commissioner McPhail to take staff's recommended actions with the modifications that we see on the screen, seconded by Commissioner Vice Chair Kessley. Secretary, oh, any final Commissioner comments on the motion before our vote? Hearing none. Secretary Lewis, please take a roll call.
Yes, Commissioner Boydson?
Yes.
Commissioner Sandley?
Yes.
Commissioner McPhail?
Yes.
Vice Chair Kessley?
Yes.
Chair Garcia?
Yes. The motion passes with five yes votes. Thank you to all of the members of the public and the applicant for your time today. Thank you very much. We're going to move to our next item. Case, well, maybe we'll give it a couple minutes. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Our hearing is still going. If you could please be quiet on your way out. Thank you very much. Our next item is case number PL 22-0041. Applicant, County of Ventura. Project description, public hearing to consider county-initiated amendments to Ventura County General Plan. Project location, all unincorporated areas of Ventura County. Case Planner Todd Davis, please proceed with your presentation. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, and Commissioners. If I could please ask, my presentation be shown. Thank you. My name is Todd Davis. I'm the case planner for the proposed county-initiated general plan amendments to the Ventura County General Plan, case number PL 22-0041, Agenda Item 6C. I'm joined today by Planning Manager Sussman. For members of the public participating on Zoom who wish to speak, please press the raise hand button on Zoom now and you'll be connected at the appropriate time. If participating by telephone, please press star and then nine to be queued. This is for Agenda Item 6C. Today's presentation will follow the outline shown here, beginning with a summary of the proposed amendments, findings and supporting evidence, SEQA environmental review, consultation, noticing, and public comments, and concluding with staff's recommended actions. Staff's proposed amendments are divided into the six following categories. First, to provide clarity, correct typographical formatting and grammatical errors. Second, to incorporate updated references from the county's multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan. Third, to incorporate the requirements of Ventura County Measure O regarding commercial cannabis. Fourth, to incorporate building lot coverage development standards approved by the board on July 25, 2023. Fifth, to revise program COSL regarding the Climate Emergency Council. And finally, sixth, to implement board direction regarding the Thousand Oaks Area Plan policies for wireless communication facilities necessary for public safety. The first subset of revisions are typographical, grammatical, and clarifying amendments meant to improve readability. A comprehensive accounting of the proposed text changes are included in Exhibit 2A shown here. Each amendment is logged, shown in legislative format, and has supporting rationale for the text change. Additions are shown blue and underlined. Deletions are shown red and struck through. In that same subset of amendments are updates to the general plan's tables and figures. Exhibit 2B, which is shown left, includes changes to general plan tables. And Exhibit 2C, shown right, includes changes to general plan figures. The second part of staff's proposal includes those amendments pertaining to the multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan. Consistent with the requirements of Assembly Bill 2140 and as requested by the Office of Emergency Services, the amendments add links to the multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan within the hazards and safety element. They reflect the official title of the hazard mitigation plan and remove parts of the multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan that were not included in the final approved Ventura County multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan. Shown here are illustrative examples of those amendments regarding the hazard mitigation plan. Shown above in Section 7.4, links have been added to the multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan, and an amendment to reference the official name of the hazard mitigation plan are proposed. Shown below in Section 712, emergency response, references to proposed actions that were not part of the final approved Ventura County multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan have been removed. The third part of staff's proposal includes a new policy in the land use and community character element to reflect the requirements of Measure O. Measure O was passed by the Ventura County voters in November 2020 and included the language that is now proposed as Policy LU 8.6. Staff's fourth proposal is to incorporate maximum building lot coverage development standards that are currently incorporated in Table 2-2 from the Land Use and Community Character Element into a new Table 2-3 titled Maximum Building Lot Coverage Development Standards for Lots Not Subject to an Area Plan. Maximum Building Lot Coverage Development Standards for Lots Subject to an Area Plan will remain within each of the respective area plans. Staff's fifth proposal comes at the request of the Sustainability Officer, who acts as staff to the Ventura County Climate Emergency Council. This amendment allows the Climate Emergency Council to continue to develop greenhouse gas emission reduction programs, but also to advise on subprograms proposed by other entities. This amendment is included as Log Number 95 in Exhibit 2A.
I'm sorry, can you go back to that last slide? That just went a little quickly for me. Thank you. Okay, thanks.
Staff's final proposal implements board direction regarding the Thousand Oaks Area Plan. At the September 26, 2023 meeting of the Board of Supervisors, staff were directed to prepare an amendment to the Thousand Oaks Area Plan Policy TO 22.3 to exempt certain wireless communication facilities from height restrictions if they are necessary for public safety. Consistent with the direction from the board, staff proposed the amendment shown here to Policy TO 22.3. This amendment will exempt wireless communication facilities that are necessary for public safety at their permitted height as of the effective date for the general plan amendment. Staff are required to make the following findings when preparing amendments to the general plan. Refer to the staff report in Exhibit 8, the 2024 General Plan Amendment Summary, for a detailed, excuse me, for a detailing of staff's analysis making these two findings. The proposed general plan amendment is a project as defined by SEQA. Staff have found that the proposed amendments are exempt from SEQA and that there is no possibility that the proposed amendments may have a significant effect on the environment and consist of operation of existing facilities. Regarding consultation, noticing, and public comments, staff are conducting SB 18 consultation and have posted public notice in the Ventura County Star on Monday, October 7. At this time, no public or tribal consultation comments have been received by staff. In conclusion, staff's recommended actions are included here on the following slides and Section F of the Planning Commission staff report. Thank you. I remain available should there be any questions.
Thank you for your presentation. Any questions of the staff by commission? Commissioner McPhail?
I just want to, excuse me, I just want to clarify one thing. The amendment to the Climate Council, it's not giving them any more authority than they have right now, right? Other than to recommend.
I'm joined this afternoon by Program Administrator Heather Allen from the Sustainability Division. She'll be available to comment on that question.
The short answer to your question, Commissioner McPhail, is no. It doesn't give them any additional authority.
Thank you.
This is the, what was the name of the entity? Climate Environmental Council? Is that right? Climate Emergency Council? Can you just clarify if the Climate Emergency Council is part of county government or if it's a separate entity? Does anybody?
Chair Garcia, Commissioners, it's an advisory board that was established by the Board of Supervisors in part of implementing the 2040 general plan. So it was established in 2021, but that was the direction of the general plan. And its main goal is to advise on our climate action plan and programs and ways to implement and reduce our GHG reductions for the county.
Is that unique to our county government or do have other counties also been required to form advisory boards like that?
Chair Garcia, Commissioners, I'm aware of several other counties that do have a climate action plan committee. Oftentimes, they're created in adopting the plan. I don't know whether they have implementing roles after it. This one was created through the public comment process on our environmental document that recommended there would be potentially more measures and ways to deal with greenhouse gas reductions. And as the science and changes progress, they had recommended to the board that ability for a community group to give guidance to the county.
Oh, Commissioner, I mean Vice Chair Kessley.
So I am actually a former member of the Ventura County Climate Emergency Council. I'm actually one of the founding members. I was on it when it was originally started. My question is just this, I'm in reading it, it says, right now, VCCEC to continue to develop proposals, but now what's added to that and to advise on subprograms and policies recommended by other entities. Can you explain what is different, what they're doing now as opposed to what they will be doing if we approve this?
Hello, Heather Allen, CEO Sustainability Division, and we are the administrators of the Climate Emergency Council. It doesn't change anything as the way the Climate Emergency Council functions. Over the past two years, there has not been any new proposals that may change, so we wanted to keep that option open that they could develop proposals and recommendations. But what has really been happening over the two years is the Climate Emergency Council has asked for presentations from different entities. Sometimes it's a county department or division or an outside entity like some of our waste service providers. And then during the meeting, they provide input, our recommendations that we take notes of, and if any of these entities, our departments or divisions, are changing plans or programs or proposing something, they'll take into account what the Climate Emergency Council comments on. But it's just engagement, learning what, if there's any options we haven't thought about or recommendations that we haven't already incorporated. So it does not change the function of the Climate Emergency Council.
Okay, just to follow up on that, only because I'm always very sensitive about resources and spending money. And if the VCCEC's charge is now no longer needed or there's no real reason for them to exist, are we creating a reason for them to exist at this point?
We will be doing a greenhouse gas, sorry, Commissioner Kessley, we will be doing a greenhouse gas inventory update over the next year, so 2025. And in the policy, it says, I think it has a year of 2025 that they will exist until. I believe once we do the greenhouse gas inventory update, that would inform us whether we should continue our proposed some other situation for the Climate Emergency Council.
Then would it be prudent to maybe just suspend that council from having meetings and using staff time if there isn't really something for them to do till maybe 2025? And again, the sensitivity is just to, is there a need for it? And if there isn't, why would we continue to spend money on it and maybe move those resources to something else?
Commissioner Kessley, I believe if that was a recommendation by the Board of Supervisors or the Planning Commission to the Board of Supervisors, that would be something we would definitely follow.
Okay. Any other questions? Commissioner Sandlin?
I have a question. It says recommend proposals to the Board of Supervisors. Would those recommendations come through our planning commissioner? Would it skip our planning commission? How would that function and that work? And I also agree with Commissioner Kessley, if there's nothing going on, why spend the resources if we could make that recommendation as well?
Commissioner Sandlin, as it currently, the policy is currently written, their proposals and recommendations would go to the Planning Commission prior to the Board of Supervisors.
So that would continue? Any recommendation would still come to us?
That is correct.
To vote on? And then it would move up to the, okay, great. Sounds good.
Any other questions for staff? Commissioner McPhail?
Move, move staff's recommendation for approval.
In just a moment, I, we need to open a public hearing. I mean, I will open the public hearing. Secretary Lewis, can you confirm if we have any public comments or speakers?
Chair Garcia, we don't have any cards or speaker cards for this item.
Okay. Would staff like to present any closing remarks? None? Okay, thank you. I will now close the public hearing. Now, motion?
I move staff's recommendation for approval.
Thank you. Commissioner McPhail?
I've got just a question on that. Did we want to add Maggie's recommendation or Commissioner Gilce's recommendation to that?
Is it possible that what goes to the Board of Supervisors can include the comments that were made about VCC? Sometimes I get the acronym wrong.
I guess that would be a question, I have a question for county council. Is that actually germane to what the recommended actions are before us right now?
The requested action is to provide a recommendation to the board on these proposed amendments. You're welcome to pass along any comments or edits or modifications that your commission deems appropriate. Yeah, I don't see anything wrong with Commissioner comments being incorporated into the recommendation to the board.
And can you clarify, Vice Chair Kessley, what is the comment that you want, you're recommending?
It appeared that possibly VCCEC's charge has somewhat stalled and that there isn't really anything for them to continue doing under their current charge. And it seems that this policy was to add and give them reason to exist that may not be necessary at this point in time. So my recommendation to the Board of Supervisors is can we just, I forget the word I used, but stall meetings until it's necessary for them to be back in action under the current charge that they have instead of giving them something additional to do, only to conserve county resources if it's not necessary. And it's just a comment to add to the supervisors.
Commissioner Boydston?
I would just suggest that maybe the language is not to disband them, but for the Board of Supervisors to take a look at if their mission is still viable and proceed from there.
I would agree.
Commissioner Kessley, do you still want the language to reflect a potential suspension of the commission until the board has that discussion?
Yes, unless the Board of Supervisors feels there's a need. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I just added that to my motion.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner McPhail with an amendment to incorporate Vice Chair Kessley's comment. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. We have a motion by Vice Chair Kes, no, sorry, a motion by Commissioner McPhail. Thank you. Seconded by Commissioner Sandlin. Secretary Lewis, can you please take a roll call?
Yes. Commissioner Boydston?
Yes.
Commissioner Sandlin?
Yes.
Commissioner McPhail?
Yes.
Vice Chair Kessley?
Yes.
Chair Garcia?
Yes. Motion passes with five yes votes. The next item is item seven, a report from Planning Director Ward on board actions and other matters.
Thank you, Chair Garcia. Commissioners, I don't have anything reportable from the Board of Supervisors at this time. And we've had a lengthy day with us today with a big agenda items. We appreciate your time and effort today. We do have items scheduled for November 14th. We have two items. We will hear the request for a major modification to a conditional use permit to continue the operation of a large-scale commercial organics processing operation. to continue the operation of a large-scale commercial organics processing operation. The applicant is Agarman and the project site is sixty-eight fifty-nine Arnold Road in the Oxnard area. And then we will be considering legislative actions related to amendments to our non-coastal zoning ordinance, which will be a large packet of items to go through. And so those will be your two agenda items for that date. We are also queuing up, and also November fourteenth, you will be meeting in the lower Plaza Conference Room, which is below this level, down the stairs, kind of directly below this building here. And they are doing chamber work in this building area through the month of November and the first part of December. So we will remind you about that date, November fourteenth, in the lower Plaza Conference Room to conduct our hearing. And then in December, we do have items queuing up for both December twelfth and December seventeenth. I realize that is slightly off track from our regular schedule, but that's also because of the room accommodations. And so we have items for both those dates. So we will wrap up the end of the year very busy. We appreciate all your time and effort with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Ward. Are there any items Commissioners wish to discuss or introduce? Okay, thank you. I now adjourn this meeting.